We'll call this meeting to order. The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves in the same courtesy towards both school personnel and each other. A moment of silence will be observed before each meeting. The board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interrupting interruptions of the meeting. Okay, with that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll take a moment of silence. All right. Good evening, everybody. Dr. Fowler, do we have any recognitions tonight?
We most certainly do. Mr. Abbotin, so good evening, Chair Abbotin, to Vice Chair Purcell, to the entire board, to all of our students, staff, families, and community members. We have six recognitions tonight. First up will be Mrs. Gaddy, Emily Gaddy. I'd like to invite her to come forward. Board, you know she's no stranger to this board due to her exemplary work in supporting student athletes and athletic programs at Orange High School for the past 10 years. So for a decade. She has done tremendous work for which she has earned numerous honors and awards, including as Athletic Trainer of the Year Award, which was awarded to her, Mrs. Gaddy, about a year ago? Yeah, about a year ago. So tonight, we are proud to do it again, to recognize Mrs. Gaddy. And so she, in service to her colleagues and in honor of her profession in terms of supporting the state, so her colleagues throughout the state, the North Carolina Athletic Trainers Association Athletic Trainer Service Awards. Let me say that again. Mrs. Gaddy is the recipient of the North Carolina Athletic Trainers Association Athletic Trainer Service Award. Let's give her a round of applause for that. And so, absolutely. So very well deserved. Serving our schools well brings its own rewards when our trainers keep students safe and healthy through the rigors and the risks of conditioning, practice, and competition at a very high level, whether it's a long football season, long nights in the gym, or long nights like we have known, have now, up to six spring sports, all competing or practicing on one campus at the same time under the lights. So tonight, we celebrate Mrs. Gaddy for being a model and resource to her peers and other districts as she is being recognized for her tireless work presenting on professional practice around the state. Mrs. Gaddy, congratulations to you. And please share with the board what you have been doing this year and what this award means to you.
I'm going to keep this very brief because I do have three games going on right now. But this award is just presented to athletic trainers for going above and beyond the call of duty. So this one in particular, me and a colleague have been presenting to the school board association, lawmakers, stakeholders, things like that about the importance of athletic trainers and safety. And so March is National Athletic Training Month. So I just want to take the time to thank y'all for your support of athletic trainers in recognizing the important role that we have in student health care and safety. I'm going to run to some games. Congratulations again.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Jessica Dreya. Dr. Dreya is the Director for Student Engagement and Support Services. And if we have social workers with us, some of our wonderful social workers in the audience, if you would come up and join Dr. Dreya. So tonight, we are eager to celebrate our school's social workers with all of you, not just from March 5th to the 11th, but all year long. So Dr. Dreya has some words to share, but I just want to start by saying to our school's social workers that we see you. When our schools provide the safe and inclusive environment that every student needs to thrive, we know that your contribution is not only essential, it is often unseen. I know that our schools and our district's social media will be sharing messages of appreciation all this week and beyond. But I also know that when our students are well-served by Orange County schools, it is often because of your support and teamwork in making sure that every student and family has access to the resources they may need to succeed. And so indeed, we see you. So Dr. Dreya, don't let me steal your thunder. I thank you and our school's social workers for joining us tonight to help us celebrate all that you do in support of our children. So Dr. Dreya.
Thank you. Good evening. Being a social worker means you will never be bored. You will always be frustrated. You will always be surrounded by challenges. So much to do in so little time. You will carry immense responsibility and very little authority. You will step into people's lives and you will make a difference. Some will bless you, some will curse you. You will see people at their worst and their best. You will never cease to be amazed at people's capacity for love, courage, and endurance. You will see life begin and end. You will experience resounding triumphs and devastating failures. You will cry a lot. You will laugh a lot. You will know what it is to be human and to be humane. Author unknown. School social workers hold a vital role in schools, providing services to students, families, staff, and the school community. School social workers invest their time training and sharing expertise to remedy barriers to learning. They work with teachers, administrators, parents, and other educators to provide coordinated interventions and consultation designed to keep students in school and help families access supports needed to promote student success. Orange County schools is fortunate to have 13 passionate, dedicated, and above all, awesome school social workers who give their all, their time, and completely pour their hearts into the work that they do with our entire school district. This evening, we want to acknowledge all of our school's social workers for the hard work they do day in and day out to provide exceptional services to our students and families and to recognize March 5th through 11th, 2023, as School Social Work Week, sponsored by the School Social Work Association of America. Happy School Social Work Week to each and every one of you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to Orange County schools for making it a priority to have social workers in each of our buildings. Unfortunately, that's not very common across the state. And our work really, the tentacles of our work go into every aspect of a school. It's hard for one person, maybe other than Dr. Dreya, ourselves and our interns, who might have learned, like, walk faster, like, we've got things to do because we're in so many teams with so many different people doing so many different things throughout the day. But part of our job is to maintain confidentiality and to do this in a way that is supporting people without erring it. And so I think that sometimes social workers are sort of flying under the radar while they're doing really important work. So I want to say thank you to Orange County schools, to the board, because I believe that having a school's social worker in each building really enhances the learning and the experience of our students and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. Okay, well, so every year since 1998, schools have celebrated March 2nd as Read Across America Day. And I know we have been reading aloud in schools all year long, including in our summer programs. But since March 2nd, this week has been on fire with students, staff, and families and lovely members of our community coming into classrooms to celebrate and read aloud together. I saw it for myself. For example, last week, Efflin Chiefs Global Elementary School held a bedtime story around the world with cookies and milk afterwards. And I have to tell you, if you have not worn pajamas as an adult to school, you have not lived because it was quite the evening. So it was an amazing after-school event where, again, adults like me could wear PJs and enjoy being read aloud to. So I am so proud of our schools for doing all that they can to share this lifelong love of reading. It is, has real consequences of the best possible kind for all of us when children learn and love to read. So it's not just to learn how to read, but we want our children to learn to love to read. And so I learned a few things from researching the subject of reading that I think may actually shock you. So do you know that more than half of American adults haven't read a book in the past year? So just because you can read doesn't mean you will read. And that learning to read is closely tied to talking and listening, and reading reduces stress by up to 68%. So what a great stress reliever if you didn't know that. Also, if you read just 20 minutes per day, that adds up to approximately 1,800,000 words per year. So no matter how you slice it, reading that many words over any amount of time will challenge and inspire you to think differently. But here's the kicker. Children who read 1 million words per year are in the top 2% of reading achievement. So that old adage, "The more you read, the better reader you become," is true. And so by reading one book a day to your child, they will have read 1,825 books by the time they are five years old. So I hope everyone in our schools has been enjoying Reading Across America Week through March 2nd, through March 6th, from March 2nd through March 6th. And we are so proud of you for showing our community and our state the kind of results we can achieve when we make this a priority every single day. All right. All right, so would Ms. Sophia Parsies Centron and Coach Heath Wren, please come forward. So Sophia, we know from talking with you and Coach Wren that you have been helping to regrow the Family Career and Community Leaders of America, also known as FCCLA, which is a student club at Orange High School. I also know that you are president of the Career and Technical Student Organization, and that is a big deal. In case tonight you're not aware, I want everyone to know that Sophia recently took advantage of an opportunity that came her way. So this was a first time that a culinary competitions, like the one at Johnson and Wales University, were open not just to culinary students, but to students who learn in a specialized who learn in a specialized culinary kitchen, but also to students in foods and nutrition, like the one that Sophia participates in at Orange High School under the direction of Coach Wren. So everyone, this is the first time, the first time that a student has gone to a culinary competition of this kind in the past 25 years. Sophia had only three to four weeks to prepare for the competition, and she placed third in her group. Let's give her a round of applause for that achievement. That is so huge. And not only that, I understand that Sophia will be going to the Culinary Institute of America in Upstate New York, my home state, in the fall. So she's already accepted and on her way, and we couldn't be more proud of her. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Sophia and Coach Wren. Tell us what this means to you.
First of all, I'd just like to thank my CTE family at Orange High School for helping us prepare for this event, especially since we have never been there. I'd like to thank the administration for their support. But most importantly, I'd like to thank Sophia and her parents for coming along for the journey and helping us out. Now, this is Sophia's night, but I'd just like to say that, you know, since I've been here at Orange High School, I was a student here. But this is just a great place to be, a great place to work. And you know when your 11-year-old son tells you, when you pull up at 7:25 in the morning, that's our superintendent, that you're in good hands. And that's kind of where I want to get with FCCLA, is I want for everyone to know that we're in good hands and we're going to continue to do better. And Sophia here is really helping us start that journey.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was a really amazing experience being at a culinary competition for the first time. It was so stressful. Why competition wouldn't be stressful? But it was fun. It was nice seeing a real culinary kitchen and just being really timed and stuff and all that. I'd like to thank Coach Wren. He helped me prepare a lot, and my parents, of course, for supporting me and everything. And I am really excited to go to the CIA next fall to further my passion for food and baking, to hopefully take that to a career where I can open my own restaurant and serve people what I enjoy making and connect people through food. Because food is life, and to me, food is love as well. Thank you.
And she will accomplish this.
I just wanted to say one other, one other item is that when I visited the class recently, I was told that Sophia is going to come back and talk to the students. And that is wonderful, and we thank you for your commitment to Orange County Schools as well.
Thank you, Mr. Abboten. All right. So next, I'm sure everyone knows that March is Women's History Month. Women's History Month has its origins as a national celebration by presidential proclamation and began on March 7th in 1982 as Women's History Week. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's Historic Progress, Congress dedicated March as Women's History Month. And so since 1995, presidents have issued annual proclamations designating March as Women's History Month. In Orange County Schools, we celebrate the contributions of women who have made our schools, community, and nation. And we recognize the specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. As you see here from social media feeds in our schools, students are learning about historical figures, pioneers, champions, and difference makers. Many known for their achievements and others previously unknown. For instance, you see where Grady A. Brown Elementary is celebrating a new mural, and you can see it here on the screen. This is a new mural created by 3rd grade students at Grady A. Brown Elementary School in partnership with the school's artist-in-residence, Jason Abidi. This mural goes along with the school's STEM theme or focus this year, which is women in STEM. So perfect, perfect match there. So we look forward to sharing more like this as we celebrate student learning during Women's History Month in March and all year long. All right, our final recognition for today. There we go. So March is also Music in Our Schools Month, Arts in Our Schools Month. So board, we know from walking into any school here in Orange County Schools, any gallery downtown, looking on our school's social media for many years, from walking into the boardroom at King Street, and even most recently during our holiday arts showcase here at the Widded Building, that our students are artists. Not future artists or artists in the making, but they're artists now, today, expressing themselves and the best of their craft in so many ways. Many of us were in attendance at the recent Black History Month Student Expo, where we enjoyed countless examples of our students' brilliance and joy that come through the arts. And in just a few short weeks, we will celebrate our new poetry clubs and the first Orange County Schools poet laureate program launched with the help of our state's own poet laureate, Ms. Jackie Shelton-Green. So this month, we are proud to ask the board to join our state and nation in recognizing March as Music in Our Schools, Arts in Our Schools Month and to acknowledge the importance of art education. Who better than our very own Mrs. Shannon Braxton, Director of CTE and the Arts? Ms. Braxton.
Good evening, good evening. Orange County School Board members, leadership. First of all, thank you so much for supporting arts in Orange County Schools. And it's a privilege for me to be the Director of Cultural Arts, serving and advocating for the 32 art teachers, cultural arts teachers that are in Orange County Schools. Thank you, thank you so much for your support of their work, of their programs, and for being visible. This month, the month of March, we're going to have a social media post every single day. There's 32 teachers, there's only 31 days, one day there's going to have to be two. So follow us on Instagram and on Twitter for all things art this month. And again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Braxton. All right. That concludes recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. All right, before we do agenda adoption, I am not aware of any consent item that's being requested pool. Is that confirmed? All right, so with that, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, agenda is adopted. Next up, we have public comment. Ms. Purcell.
First up tonight, we have Maria Del Carmen Flores.
Hola, buenas noches. A todos los miembros de la junta escolar y a la doctora Felder, nuestra superintendente. Agradecemos la oportunidad de hablar con ustedes esta noche. Como padres hispanos de la comunidad, nos gustaría comunicarnos acerca de nuestras experiencias en el condado. En los últimos años, nos hemos dado cuenta del trabajo tan grande que ha hecho la doctora Felder. Especialmente durante la pandemia, estando al pendiente de todo lo que necesitan nuestros niños y las familias. Necesitamos recibir la comunicación clara, recibir asistencia como todo, cómo podemos apoyar a nuestros niños e involucrarnos en la educación y asegurarnos de que estén seguros en las escuelas. La doctora Felder ha trabajado duro durante estas áreas para podernos apoyar. Durante la pandemia, trabajó de cerca con el Departamento de Salud para asegurarse de tener la información actual y mantener a las familias informadas de cláustros en las escuelas. También trabajó duro para abrir las escuelas otra vez y asegurarse que nuestros niños regresaran a las escuelas donde aprenden mejor, pueden mantenerse al contacto social con sus compañeros, que eso fue primordial. Durante la pandemia, muchos niños desarrollaron depresión u otros problemas emocionales y mentales. Acerca de las involucrarse y apoyar a todas las familias. Ella ha recomendado que las escuelas tengan un personal bilingüe para dar apoyo a las familias, familia liaison, y proporcionar interpretación durante las juntas escolares y académicas con los padres. Al igual que todo el apoyo que ha dado al mantener el personal bilingüe, el apoyo a todos los que necesitan, así mismo el apoyar la equidad en la comunidad. El apoyo de los deportes y en los que ella hace acto de presencia para estar cerca de la comunidad y escuchar las necesidades. Gracias. Es muy importante que usted esté ahí. Estamos preocupados por perder todo el trabajo que se ha hecho en estos últimos años y no queremos empezar de cero con otro superintendente que va a llegar con otras ideas que tal vez eso no beneficiará a los niños. También el miedo de tener en nuestra necesidad de mantener maestros que puedan incrementar. No queremos ese cambio tan brusco que se siente cada vez que cambia el superintendente. Y estoy orgullosa de que tenemos una mujer de color en este puesto y que entiende el racismo de una perspectiva propia. Siento que es un riesgo para la educación de nuestros niños. Por eso pedimos a la junta escolar que le ofrezca una extensión a su contrato para que podamos seguir adelante y proporcionar y lograr lo que nuestras familias en realidad necesitan. Para todos nuestros estudiantes que tengan éxito. Muchas gracias por escucharnos y considerar nuestra petición.
Thank you.
Do you understand what you were saying?
Not all of it.
Okay, I got you. I got the English part. Hello, good evening, school board members and Dr. Felder, our superintendent. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Hispanic Latino parents in our community, we would like to communicate about our experiences in Orange County Schools. Over the past few years, we have come to realize what a great job Dr. Felder has done, especially during the pandemic, being attentive to the needs of our children and our families. We need to receive clear communication, receive assistance on how we can support our childrens and be involved in their education and make sure they are safe in school. Dr. Felder has worked hard in these areas to support us. During the pandemic, she worked closely with the Health Department to make sure we had current information and keep families informed of clusters in the schools. She also worked hard to open schools again and make sure our childrens can go back to school where they learn better and can stay in social contact with the peers, which was paramount. As the pandemic means children develop depression or other emotional and mental problems. In regards to getting involved and supporting all of our families, she has recommended the school have a bilingual family liaison and provide interpretation during school meetings and parent academy, as well as all the support that she has given for maintaining bilingual staff to support all the needs, as well as supporting equity in the community and supporting schools and other events where she makes presence known so that she might be close to the community and listen to our needs. We are worried about losing all the work that has been done, and we do not want to start from scratch with another superintendent who will come with new ideas that might not benefit us. Also, we are afraid that our needs for teacher might increase. We don't want that abrupt change that we feel very time abrupt change that we feel every time our superintendent changes. I am proud that we have a woman of color in this position who understands racism from her own perspective. I feel a great risk of our children's education. This is why we are asking the school board to offer Dr. Felder an extension to her contract so that we can move forward in providing and accomplishing what our families need in order for all of our students to succeed. Thank you very much for listening to us and for considering our request.
Thank you.
Next up is Claudia Wyirna. Do you, okay, all right. Thank you, Bo. Okay, Polly Dornetti.
Hello, I am actually going to keep it pretty brief tonight, but it is March, and Gravely still does not have 7th grade math teachers. While I do hear, we have some good news on the horizon. Still, our students made it through to 3rd quarter without math teachers, which is astounding to me that that would happen in our district. I do want to take a minute, though, to also, while we're excited that we might be seeing some improvement on the horizon, teacher morale is low, and a lot of that has to do with discipline and the lack of ability to discipline students. And we want to make sure that our teachers that we have this year are our teachers again next year. The best way to fill vacancies is to not end up with them in the first place. So I want to urge you guys to take a look at the Student Code of Conduct, strengthen it, and give our teachers some protection against unruly students. This is not just a problem at my child's school, this is a problem district-wide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Nana Day.
Hello, I just wanted to thank y'all. I know that in the last week, many of you spent at least some time meeting again to make sure the robot team could get to Asheville. And I think you probably can tell from my voice that, yes, it was a good time. But I just really wanted to make sure that you all on the board knew that, that we appreciate that. Appreciate Dr. Felder and Mr. Johnson, and Dr. Hips and other folks in the system that helped make that happen. Wanted to make sure you knew that we did win as part of the Winning Alliance in UNC Asheville and also received the Autonomous Award. So that means the things that the robot was programmed to do by itself, which, if you haven't watched the game, there's a place where it bounces, and our robot is able to balance itself autonomously, which is great. And then, just, I can't say enough about how well the students did and how well they represent us as a community. And, you know, we can't do it alone. We really appreciate. Oh, I almost forgot that Kevin Smith also came and took pictures and stuff when he was up there in the mountains. So it's just those little things, the parents notice that, the students notice that. I just really wanted to thank you. And I think, oh, the other thing I was going to tell you is also one of our students, Bek Tiani. They are the recipient of the Dean's List, one of two students. We nominated two from our team, and then they are one of the two students that will go on and compete at the state level for that, in the state championship. So we're very proud, the first time we've had that. The other thing I'll tell you is that the other student was from a team in Charlotte that is mentored and started by one of our students, by a graduate from Cedar Ridge High School. And we have a graduate from Orange that mentors with us. And I met one of my former physics students who's mentoring with E-Spot. So that's the other thing that you need to know. It's not only impacting students and people in our community, but you can think of it as impacting the whole state. And we did, this is not the whole team, but we did, at least those of us who are unpacking the trailer tonight, sign this for you. It says, "Dear Orange County Schools Board of Education and Orange County Schools staff, the hedgehogs, thank you for your support in making our UNC Asheville District Championship possible. We're thrilled to have been part of the Winning Alliance. Thanks for changing lives and for giving us this opportunity. We hope to see some of you in Roseville March 18th and 19th." And I don't know if I can, can I give this to somebody? Do I give it to you?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next up, Ebony Bryant.
Good evening. I'm sorry, churchy. I expected it back. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Ebony Freeland Bryant again. I am the proud mother of two Gravely Hills students, a sixth and an eighth grader, a native of Orange County and an OHS graduate. I also have the distinct privilege of serving as the president of the Gravely Hills PTSO, and I'm back. I'm here today just to keep Gravely Hills name ringing in your ears. I'm here today to remind you that Equity says that we customize tools and resources that identify and address inequality. However, as we are a few days removed from Black History Month and a few days into Women's History Month, I want this district to push towards justice. And justice is not just about laws, right? Justice says that we fix the systems that lead to inequity and inequality. So I want to stand today for the teachers at Gravely who worked so hard, but were heartbreakingly excited to get a $50 cash holiday gift. I want to stand for the students at Gravely who work hard, play hard, sing hard, but still battle with the specter of a school report card and disciplinary issues abound. I want to stand for the parents that show up and raise money and volunteer, but are sadly a very small group. So I want to use this time to stand and say we still need continued support, continued attention, continued understanding and continued growth. I appreciate, I'm one that's going to acknowledge when things improve. And I appreciate improving communication from Dr. Felder and the work that Dr. Gammon is doing. He's come in, listening and moving, but do not forget us. Do not forget us out in the country of Orange County. Because I grew up here and I'm raising my kids here, I will continue to work towards justice in this district until it's all the way around and not just here in Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the.
All right. That is all the public comments for tonight. With that, we will move to board comments if there are any. We'll start with Dr. Moore.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for sharing your voice in public comment tonight. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and sharing your thoughts. A couple of things since the last board meeting. I want to thank Dr. Green for the Student Achievement Committee meeting. I thought it was a really productive meeting. We got to talk with a number of teachers and principals at schools about how they're strengthening their PLC, their professional learning community process. So I thought it was really great to hear directly from them what's working, what's still challenging. So thank you for that. And then got a chance just to enjoy some really excellent events. The IB art shows downtown are incredible. Grady Brown had a STEM family night that was like incredibly well attended, really special. River Park had a PE family night that was a lot of fun. And I feel like there was one more, but anyway, oh, the Black History Month event was incredible. Really, that Student Expo, those performances were very, very special. I hope that continues to grow. It was really cool to see this. I especially liked the group. There was a musical performance that had a school counselor and our chief equity officer and three students performing together. That was really very special. So thank you to everyone who helped put that together.
Right, Ms. Toole.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out to public comment. And there were many events recently and being able to attend a few of them. I also really appreciated the STEM night at Grady A. Brown. It was incredibly inclusive from a language standpoint, from an ability standpoint, from, I just found it to be a really inclusive space and people were eagerly attending. And also, I really enjoyed people kind of bringing all the noise to Orange High School at the Black History Month celebration. I'm glad that's going to be a continuing event. And I had the privilege of getting to see the hedgehogs win out in Asheville, which was awesome. And I just am appreciative of, while we're talking about Women's History Month, Dr. Felder, your leadership and the example you set for creating an inclusive environment for all our student, female and non-binary leaders in our district. I feel like we've grown by leaps and bounds in that department. So thank you.
All right, Bonnie.
Yeah, I want to first add my thanks to the parents who took the time and the people who took the time to come out tonight. I know your schedules are really busy and so thank you so much. And it makes a difference for us to hear your voices. I also enjoyed the STEM night, enjoyed the Black History Showcase. But I wanted to take a minute to, to say congratulations to civil rights attorney James Williams and retired Orange County Schools leader Dolores Simpson for receiving, for receiving the Paulie Murray Award this week. And if you don't know Dolores, Dolores was a teacher, a counselor, and then retired to a decade of service on this board, including the first African-American board chair. And she leaves a legacy. We've all been talking about Jackie Shelton Green and others, but Dolores mentored Jackie Shelton Green. She mentored Dr. Melissand Rainey. So she leaves behind a legacy of community, of Black community leaders. And she did it before we were talking about equity. She created a safe space for our Black, our really promising, exciting Black students. So congratulations, Dolores.
All right, Ms. Richmond.
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate everyone that was recognized this evening on everything, all their recognitions and the things that they've done in our school district. And lastly, I attended the school safety task force that has been put on by the Orange County Commissioners. And I think it's going to be a great collaboration between Orange County Schools, Chapel Hill, Carbo City Schools to try to make our schools, especially externally, schools safer. We had some great talks and ideas came about. So I think I'm looking forward. That's gonna, that's gonna be very important and some good information brought before us.
Thank you. Ms. Prusell.
I too would like to thank those that have spoken tonight. It's always great to hear from parents and hear perspective from the community. So thank you for being here. I had the honor of attending the Black History Month Expo at Orange High School. And I have to say, it was not what I expected when I went in there, but it was a fantastic event. And the energy in the room was absolutely phenomenal. I think that everyone that participated did an outstanding job and is looking forward to doing something similar to that again. I also have visited Efflin Cheeks, spent some time there with Ms. Parks. We had STEM night at Grady A. Brown, which was absolutely phenomenal, too. The energy that those children had at six o'clock at night, running around, doing experiments and showing people how they do things was pretty impressive. And I think the parents that were there enjoyed it as much as, as students did. Also had the honor of going to the ham and egg supper at FFA, puts on every year because February is FFA month as well. And so I went over there and enjoyed, always enjoyed time at Orange High School and enjoyed that event as well.
All right. Just briefly, a few items. So definitely wanted to thank everyone for coming out to speak tonight. Really appreciate giving y'all's perspective and helping us understand. I got to attend the chorus at Efflin Cheeks. Amazing. Kids were wonderful. It was well, well-packed and just great to see all the parents and students involved. The Black History Month, amazing. It was great to see the participation across our district to come together and just the excitement from all of the events and sharing. Grady A. Brown STEM Night, amazing. Seeing the students trying to figure out real problems and where these problems and thoughts were around. It was wonderful to see that. The IB art that was mentioned, so talented students we have across this district. Our seniors are amazing. The Orange High School Chorus, it was great to hear that as always. Our FFA ham and eggs, great to see, although it was a dinner, it's actually where they show what they've done throughout the year and the give back they do to the community as well. So that was great to hear some of the things they're doing within our community. Got to attend the Equal Opportunity Schools and hear a preview of that at Orange High. It was great to hear and hear from the students and see what some of the results were and looking forward to hearing more. And also I got the opportunity to visit multiple schools. And I will answer the question I keep getting, yes, I'm coming to your school if I haven't been there yet. But I appreciated visiting. It was great to hear all the things going on and just the excitement from our teachers and staff on some of the things they're working on. And some of the students were just amazing, too. So thank you, everybody, for sharing your classroom with me and looking forward to visiting others. With that, we'll move over to consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move into our first work session item. The first one is Equal Opportunity Schools.
Terrific. Well, we are thrilled to be here. Orange High School is definitely in the house this evening and they are here to represent Equal Opportunity Schools as well. I don't see a clicker up here, Frank. Is that? Thank you so much. So we are thrilled to share with you the successes of our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools. As you, as you know, this partnership began last year in 2021 with the understanding of the gaps that exist throughout our country in access and opportunity to advanced coursework for our students in our historically resilient communities. The mission of EOS, Equal Opportunity Schools, is to strengthen both educator and system leaders' capacity to break down the barriers for students in order to increase their access, their feelings of belonging and their success in rigorous coursework. And despite our partnership at both Orange High School and Cedar Ridge High School being just a year old, we have been seeing tremendous growth in all of those areas already. I wanted to share just a few things that our partnership with EOS brings to us. You'll see a lengthy list. One of the most important pieces that I think, I think Ms. Williamson will speak to and Ms. Principal, Mr. Johnson will speak to as well, is the value of our partnership director, and that's Stephanie Shearer. And she is with us virtually and will speak to us in just a minute. But in addition to that partnership and that human capital that is brought to us, we receive an abundance of resources that help us to identify those gaps, those barriers and obstacles that we can then strategically work to overcome. And you'll see some of the opportunities that have been uncovered through this partnership. We learn through the tools that they provide us, which include surveys of students and staff about students' career and college aspirations. We learn about individual students' views on college. We learn about staff perspectives and student perspectives and their individual experiences in our schools regarding equity, how much we talk about race and culture in classrooms, the experience that those conversations have on our students and how it makes them feel. We learn about their values and their understanding of rigor and the level of rigor they are experiencing as students in their classrooms and the teacher's perspective on the level of rigor that they are providing in the classrooms. We also learn about student mindsets. We learn about the opportunities. We look at what research shows us through EOS in terms of the numbers of students who historically are passed over for these opportunities. One of the big pieces that we get from our work with EOS is professional development. And at this time, I'd like to pass it over virtually to our partnership director, Stephanie Shearer, to speak a little bit about that before we get to our student representative teacher and administrators. So Stephanie, if you'll share a little bit with us tonight, please.
Thank you so much for that warm introduction, Dr. Carr. And good afternoon, everyone. Excited to be with you all virtually tonight, talking about what phase two of the partnership looks like. And so as Dr. Carr mentioned, a big part of the work in phase two is, of course, to continue with the work of phase one, right? But as we work to kind of identify students for advanced coursework, we also want to make sure that we are focused on a sense of belonging in those courses for all of our students. And so in phase two, a lot of the professional development with the equity team and schoolwide is around these five cues and conditions of belonging. Those cues and conditions are the degree to which culturally relevant curriculum takes place, culturally relevant teaching, the sense of classroom community that students feel, the degree to which we are able to foster belonging through expectations, feedback and assessments, and then when applicable in classes, when conversations about race and experience take place. And so one of the things that the Support and Belonging Report shows is that as students, all students, around the degree to which those things are happening in their classes, and then we're able to use that data to assess with our equity team how to continue with the things that are working really well and then how to continue to foster the sense of belonging. And so we break that down into four workshops. We are on, going into workshop three with both Cedar Ridge and Orange High School. So we started the year with our grounding and our goal setting, what the school year will look like based off of the data, what the Tricia report is telling us, the degree to which students are staying in and feeling successful in advanced coursework across the board. We then measure and talk about ways to foster and increase classroom community. We will move into then talking about expectations, feedback and assessments and the ways to meet the needs of all students through those components that's coming up in March. And then we will culminate the year around student-centered teaching, again, using the data that students are telling us from the survey to assess the degree to which it's happening at the school and to continue that work. So that is what the four workshops in year two look like with Orange County this year. And I will, with that, pass it back over to Dr. Carr. Really excited to hear from the students tonight.
Yeah, thanks so much, Stephanie. And one of the things that she has done particularly well for us is to tailor that professional development to the individual schools. So while Orange High School has been meeting as an equity team and as a full staff and doing their professional development in person in that way, at Cedar Ridge High School, they've been doing smaller group professional development during PLCs, both equally successful and both appropriate, but again, tailored to the needs of the school. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Tanisha Williamson, our assistant principal at Orange High School, so she can talk about why this work matters so much and our successes so far.
Thank you so much. My name is Tanisha Williamson. I am one of the assistant principals at Orange High School. Thank you so much for a member of the board coming over, Dr. Felder coming over to the school to watch the EOS showcase the other day. We had a really good time having some different districts come to our school and witness what we are doing to promote our students into the AP classes, which has been really nice. I just want to talk to you a little bit just about the progression that we've taken with our AP courses and what the numbers look like in our school so far. So what I'd like to share with you that to highlight Orange High School AP course requests for our 11th and 12th grade students, it has increased for our Black and African-American students subgroup by seven students this year and our Latinx subgroups have increased by two students. Our multiracial and additional races subgroup has increased by 12 students. We really, really, really have appreciated having Equal Opportunity Schools initiative in our school for year two. This year, we've learned a lot about ourselves as a school, as an equity team. We really appreciate Stephanie Shearer, our EOS consultant, for coming in and helping us drive the work that we do. It is, it can't not be done with one person. It takes the entire school to make this work happen. It takes an equity team that has really pushed this work forward in our school and making sure that we check and balance ourselves as we're moving through this process. We've also, like Stephanie said, we've been going through some PD work. We've also, like Stephanie said, we've been going through some PD work with our Equity Team and our whole school staff, just to make sure that we're delivering this information into our whole school. And we are hoping that this year our numbers increase as we learn more about what we need to do to support our students. Tonight, I have with us Mr. Xavier Adams, who is going to tell you a little bit about what the Student Insight Card looks like for us and how we use that in our school. And then we also have a student from our student panel that's going to share with you some information about how Equal Opportunity Schools have helped her, her success and her barriers as she's been in Orange High School. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Dr. Felder and the entire school board for having us this evening. So, to share a little bit of information about how these Student Insight Cards work, every student at Orange High School is required to fill out a survey, and this is asking questions about their experience in schools as well as advantages and disadvantages they've faced while in certain classroom settings. And the benefit of having this information kind of as a system level for every student is it allows teachers to kind of gain information that we previously did not have about our students. Sometimes, students, for whatever reason, are not always willing to share certain information about either the discomfort or lack of confidence in an academic setting. And being able to utilize Equal Opportunity Schools really garners this information for us to then be very intentional about having conversations with our students. So, myself and other teachers at Orange High School are identified as trusted adults, and our responsibility is to really make sure that we are having those conversations. I think a lot of us as adults can empathize with the experience of maybe we're too afraid to ask for help. We experience this sense of, well, everyone else has it figured out except for me, so I might not speak up for myself. And the survey allows students to speak up for themselves in ways that they feel as though they need additional support. And then us as trusted adults were able to really go in, kind of programmatically offer opportunities for students to understand you are capable of handling additional coursework that be, might be at a higher rigorous level than the ones you've taken before. And the, the point I really want to emphasize is through these Student Insight Cards, we've been able to identify students that are previously due to GPA, due to success in their previous classes, are qualified and competent to be able to take these additional AP classes, and yet they just haven't. And there's reasons that are identified for various students. Some of that is just a lack of information, a lack of knowledge about that these opportunities are available to all students. Some of that boils down to their racial identity and feeling a sense of intimidation in respective classroom settings. And so, having these Insight Cards then is beneficial for us as a staff to really be able to think about what are ways that we as a school culture can assist our students in being able to ensure that all of our students succeed to the best of their abilities. And so, I'm very grateful that the school district has been able to offer us this opportunity, this partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools, and I hope that we continue this partnership with them. And now, Samaya Baldwin, who's a junior at Orange High School, will share about her, yes?
Before you switch, can you read what the student wrote as their comment on this card?
Yes, so this is a, this is a template card, so this is not representative of a student at Orange High School, but I do think the comments could be said to be true for how certain students at Orange High School feel. And the student here is Hosue, and Hosue's comments are, "Sometimes when I tell people at school that I want to be a surgeon, they look surprised. That makes me doubt myself, even though this has been my goal since I was six. Just because I have an accent, it doesn't mean I am dumb. I am smart. I just wish you'd believe in me." And as a trusted adult, as someone who has seen some of these Insight Cards, again, this does resonate with what certain students have shared in the past. So now, Junior Samaya Baldwin will come and talk a little bit about her experience and why she values this work.
Hi, I'm Samaya Baldwin. I'm a junior at Orange, and I personally have taken two AP courses at Orange. Thank you. I've taken AP Environmental Science last semester, and this semester I'm taking AP Language and Arts. I personally want to say thank you to the Board and Equal Opportunity Schools for partnering with us, because I feel like the survey really like shows that you guys care about us minorities in AP courses. And just in the class as a whole, I am the only minority in my AP Lang class, so like, I don't feel like, like, I feel like I belong, but like, it's a little awkward being the only minority in there. So, I feel like with Equal Opportunity Schools help, the AP courses will be for, a lot better with minorities inside. We also hosted an AP Lunch where I was a part of the student panel again, and we talked to other underclassmen about taking AP courses as a minority and how they could do it. And like, it's hard, yes, but like, we deserve to be in that class just as much as anyone else. And we need to ta, take that step and step and, you know, stand up for ourselves and believe in ourselves. Yes. AP courses for me have given me like a higher work ethic, like, I feel like I can do anything now. They are hard, they are very challenging, but the teachers are very like supportive and understanding, and if you need something, it's very nice to have them there, because my AP Environmental Science teacher was the best, like, she helped me regardless of whatever I needed. It was very challenging for me, but I pushed through, and I just hope that more minorities will listen to us and will do the same and sign up for classes. Equal Opportunity Schools, I just feel like it's going to help us with getting more minorities. So, I hope that they expand to other schools so that then they'll have, you know, the same opportunity that we have as minorities. I just hope that we get more minorities because we need them in our classes to represent us as minorities and as a community, we just need it. So, I just want to say thank you to you guys and to Equal Opportunity Schools for helping us out. So, thank you.
And we want to say thank you to Samaya. And as much as Equal Opportunity Schools is truly helping us with this work, it's going to be students like Samaya and her classmates who spoke on Friday that really encourage other students to join in those classes. She's an inspiration, as we were sharing with her grandparents and her classmates are as well. We're incredibly proud of them. So, at this point, we do want to open it up for any questions of any of these individuals, of Stephanie or myself.
Board questions or comments? Sarah?
Well, this is awesome, and thank you, Samaya, and thank you, everyone, for coming out and just sharing your perspective and your experience with it. And thank you for advocating for other students to join. I really think that peer, you know, seeing you succeed, I'm sure is going to help them feel like they can succeed too. So, good for you, that's awesome. I have two questions, I'll just ask one, and then I can ask my other one after other people have questions. And this is about just the, the chart that y'all showed earlier. So, can you just help me understand? So, last fall to this fall, like, for Black slash African-American students, was this, is this the whole student population of those grades?
Yep, this, this chart is actually looking at AB and IB classrooms, so this is looking at both Orange High and Cedar Ridge.
And so, that shows that it is, is the, this is like, we've gone from 18% of Black students enrolling in AP and IB to 30%?
Yes, we've got, so we, these are our projections for course enrollment. That was the most recent data we had there. We're waiting for additional reports to come back at this time. But we do see in each of the demographic areas, with the exception of Asian students, and we know we have a smaller Asian population, we have seen growth, significant growth in each of those areas, yes. So, from 113 to 165 targeted students.
I mean, that is significant. That is, you know, we, we, over the years, we have reports on how, on our enrollment of students of color in AP and IB courses, and this seems much larger. So, congratulations.
We talked a little bit on Friday about how this, and I think it was Jason Johnson who shared, the, the work is, Tanisha said, it's, it's not work that one person can do, it takes everybody. Could we do this without EOS? We could, but we, it, not at this rate of progress. It would take us years to do what we were able to do in one year because of, as a direct result of that work and their focused plan in working with each of our schools.
That's awesome. I just want to be clear from my comment too, you know, I, I recognize that everyone's aspiration is that we get to similar levels of, but that trajectory is just very different than what we have seen in the past, so.
Right, other comments? Andre?
I just want to say, great job to my little cousin. I know family back there is extremely proud of her, but continued a great work, that is awesome. And, and please share that message with other students of, of color, because we definitely need to be in those AP classes. I can tell you, had I taken some AP classes, I may have done a little something different, but, you know, it takes going into the AP classes and showing that you can do it. So, we gotta, we gotta reach out to those students and get them in there. Great job.
Carrie?
I just wanted to say thank you, thank you to our partners in Equal Opportunity Schools, and thank you for all the leadership at, at Orange. And I was able to attend the event last spring with the celebration of the Minority Achiever Program and the Equal Opportunity Schools. I know there's a two separate programs, so it seems like some overlap, and it seems like, also from what you're saying, Samaya, that you need that, like, almost critical ma, mass of like peer support, you know? It just seemed like there was some real energy overcoming the, the barriers that have been there in the, in the past. And, and so, thank you for your leadership and making that happen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say first, congratulations and thank you, Samaya. That was an amazing presentation. I can't imagine the AP class without you, you know, so, really nice job. Just, just so I can understand, so we have a projection to go from 113 to 165, is that by the end of this, you know?
That was the projection for enrollment, yes, for this year, and we are waiting, Equal Opportunity Schools provide us with multiple reports, and so we'll be able to confirm all of that data and further, because we're also looking at success rates. We absolutely want to increase access and enrollment numbers, but we want to make sure that our students are successful once they get into those classes as well. So, that additional data is forthcoming.
Yeah, that's great, that's so important. And what's your times, like, is that coming in a couple of months or is it coming?
Stephanie, can I defer to you on that one?
Yes, absolutely. So, we align what we call Course Request Uploads by meeting with the District, Orange County's like data team, and asking the schools when course registration is taking place for next year. And so, given that it's starting now, kind of mid-March to April, we like to have a true estimate, so we wait until both Orange and Cedar Ridge are 50 to 75% enrolled or so for next year for projections. So, our first Course Request Upload will come around the third week of March, and what I'll do then is send an updated chart to Dr. Carr and then the teams at both Cedar Ridge and Orange, so we can say this is our progress towards registration in AP and IB and dual enrollment, and also gives them time to also go back and kind of continue outreach, but that will take place. I believe the exact date is around March 22nd, but it's the third week of March when we'll provide that Course Request Update so that it aligns with registration for Orange County.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I did have, I did have one more question, which is, and I appreciated seeing the reports that were uploaded and simply to the sort of bigger reports. And one thing that stood out to me was the survey results, student and staff views on rigor, this sort of like rigor and expectations for kids. And it seemed like we're asking staff and students, are classes challenging or very challenging? And that the larger gaps actually were in sort of the standard classes as opposed to AP, like, in terms of, students and staff related to our standard classes are less likely than other EO schools to say that they were challenging. And it reminded me that when the District did the literacy audit last year, one of the things they found sort of across grade levels was that students weren't, large numbers of students weren't engaging with grade level text, they weren't being asked rigorous questions about the text. And so, I just, I noticed that in that place, and I noticed it here. And I know that in the younger grades, one of the ways we're addressing that in literacy is like a new literacy curriculum. At the high school level, how are you all thinking about like the level of expectation and rigor for kids in all of the classes in addition to the AP and IB classes? Are there, are there particular strategies?
Absolutely, I can speak to that. And then if Tanisha or Jason want to jump in as well, but all of those reports give us an abundance of, of data and helps us to triangulate where our key areas are to focus on next. And so, as we're looking at that, there are multiple ways we'll address that. That is, that stood out to me as well. There are some other areas that stand out too. So, part of it is prioritization and really looking at what we tackle first. We know as we think back to earlier, this evening, even as we think about discipline at the younger grades across the board, we know most of the time that goes back to class engagement, and it goes back to the level of both rigor and authentic engagement, cultural, cultural responsiveness in classrooms as well. So, we're tackling all of that. When we speak specifically at the high school level, we're looking at the coaching that's going on from our Assistant Principals at that level individually with teachers and in PLCs through observations. That will also guide both Jason and Dr. Anna Hips, their work as they're planning out their professional development for the summer and for the future years, as they're planning through that and thinking through what comes next. I don't know if either of you want to speak to that as well?
For, for everybody in the district, we're looking at the PLC model and what that looks like for us in the high school, so we can become more data-driven within our PLCs from our classroom instruction. We're doing walkthroughs, being very purposeful with those, making sure we teaming up to, you know, use that data appropriately. So, our PLCs is what's going to be important for us to drive the instruction in our classrooms.
And particularly to your point, just a couple of weeks ago, the AP teachers had a conversation around what does an AP student looks like, what type of skills do they need? And through that conversation, we as a group, we decided, hey, this, the skills that we're talking about are very important, not just for AP students, honor students, as well as our standard, students in our standard classes. So, at Orange High, it's hopeful that we develop a list of skill sets that we're looking for that's across the board for all students.
All right, and I would just like to share my appreciation as well, Samaya, for coming tonight, and thank you for standing up and being a leader. It's not easy, so we appreciate that. EOS, just thank you for being on tonight. Staff, thank you all for your passion. Just a couple of learnings that I had from the Orange High that I thought was a little different that I didn't specifically hear, but one was the, how the students talked about having that trusted adult to talk to when they're not feeling well, and to be able to have somebody that could understand and have the card and know the background and to be that person they could go to. The other thing that I, that I thought was interesting that I didn't hear tonight, but I, I wanted to share with the Board, is if a student wants to drop, they need to go talk to their advisor and go through that discussion, and that way, this isn't a just a, it's tough right now and I just, I just want to give up versus, hey, you've got this. You're, you're doing fantastic. And I believe I heard the, the one student had a 95 or something and wanted to drop, and after talking, you know, they were okay. And I think that's the key is that support system that helps when you're not sure or you're feeling overwhelmed.
And I would add, at Orange, it's, in addition to speaking to their advisor, they have to sit down and meet personally with this man right here. So, they will not drop a class until they have a conversation, and the majority of times, they are not dropping that class after that conversation. They have that belief in themselves and they have the support network there.
And the last thing I'll share, that again, from the student panel, I, I learned this, was the perspective of the students that don't have more people that look like you in the class, being afraid to ask questions because you're not sure or worried about what people may think. So, it, it was very helpful to hear those perspectives and also understand the support system around it. It's not just getting students in the class, it's making sure they have the supports around it to keep them in class engaged and feed back into the program to get others to see what a wonderful program it is. So, thank you. Any other board members? All right, thank you all so much. All right, next up, we have the Board of County Commissioners Discussion. So, we do, for context, have a, a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, and every time it feels a little different on how it's done and who speaks and all that. So- So, we're going to do it a little different this time and give us a chance to talk a little bit about it and who, who's going to talk to the specific items during the meeting. So, we had the opportunity as well, that is unusual for this county commissioner meeting, is instead of having specific agenda items this time that each district will come in and speak to, they're just giving each district a set time, cover the items, and then they will ask questions around it. So, Dr. Felder and I got together and came up with, here are, here are the agenda items that we have talked about or we've shared with commissioners or that have come up in our discussions. And from the agenda within SYMLY, the first item is just an update overview of the school, very quick, just to give kind of a, the broad item. And normally, we do that as an introduction before we go into detail. The second was talking about really the challenges of staff and retention with multiple items under that. Now, these were just the items that we could talk to. And then, the last one was talking about capital improvements, including the school safety and swing space, and giving a chance to talk about this item. This item has been challenging, and we do hear a lot from other commissioners on what we're doing, what are the next steps? So, first, I'd like to, we did ask for feedback, and thanks from everybody to, to submit that. One of the feedback we got was for each of these items to talk briefly about the impact to our students for these. So, not just coming in and saying, here's the item, but how does, how is this item impacting our students? And then, here's some more of the specifics, which I think that's a great idea to connect it, so everybody has that grounding of, of why this is important. That was one of the, the big feedbacks we had on, on the, the items. So, I'm going to just step back and get comments first on, is everybody okay with these items for us to have that discussion? That, again, these will be the things we talk to the commissioners on, and the commissioners will obviously ask questions around it. They're obviously have the ability to ask us questions beyond these, but these would be the items we would, we would start with. Bonnie?
I have, I have a couple of questions on the items. I guess I wondered if we should be talking about the adequacy of the funding for our schools? And if we need more, should we be talking about, we may need more people in schools? So, because we don't, we talk about keeping the people that we have, but, so, so I just wonder if we want to talk about adding positions which aren't funded. The other thing that I don't know, just to step back a second, will we be talking about things like, I think the world, the world believes that we're recovering from COVID, and learning recovery is the big deal. And I'm not sure if the commissioners appreciate the challenges of student behavior and teacher burnout and absenteeism and the mental health supports that our people, our staff and students need. So, this is just, I think the problems are worse than at least I, I expected. And I just wonder if we need to share that with the commissioners.
So, that could be shared in the overall update as just talking about some of the challenges as we are getting back in there, if that is the pleasure of the board versus having it as a separate item to discuss. But, what's the pleasure of the board?
Okay, I mean, I think having it as sort of the context that we're operating in makes sense to me, if that's what the first section is. Well, I have a question, the 20 minutes per topic, does that include the commissioner questions? Is it like a five-minute presentation, or is it?
So, it, we're given a full 45 minutes and then allowed questions. So, I don't have.
I don't know that we would want to talk for 20 minutes on these topics either, but I was curious, you know, sometimes they have a lot of questions, so.
We, we did not, we just ballparked 20 minutes of, because the way it'll work is we can, we'll present and then give the opportunity to ask questions then, and then go to the next item. The only danger we have is we need to make sure that we can get past the questions to get to the next section, or we won't be able to present. So, I'm going to be the ad hoc for our session, so I'm going to try to help manage the time. But, but it's a great point. I don't, I don't think we intended for it to be a full 20 minutes, but just kind of a ballpark.
Carrie? Kind of to that point, we've also had different approaches at times about how much there is presentation, you know, how much we have, like, staff presentation versus board conversation versus points. You know, that we've, we've kind of gone back and forth on how we approach things. So, what's the approach?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. So, the intention was to not have any slides and to, for us to have some talking points that we could share. If there is something we feel that, you know, is better visually, we could. But, the intention is to have the conversation and not to have any one of us or staff creating slides, but more of having the conversation. And if there are specific numbers or things, we could share those with the commissioners or share those specific talking points with the commissioner if needed. But, the intention is not to create slides for, for this. Okay, other thoughts?
Can I, I just, when we talk about retention strategies, for example, you know, restructuring supplements is one of multiple solutions. So, will that conversation be a little bit more open-ended than just restructuring teacher supplements? You know?
Yeah, I, I believe the intention when we put this together was to give you an idea of what some of the items were, but not to be like, this is all, like.
It also, what I'm reading here is, like, these are some that have financial implications that could show up in our budget requests to them, right? So, there are all kinds of things that impact retention, but the ones that might have dollars that we're going to go to them for might be these.
Absolutely, right, right. But, you know, it's, you know, I'm just thinking that we might ask for more than supplement. I don't want this to be perceived as, as our list, right? That's.
I think that's, and I think that's a great point, because it is not the only thing we're doing. And so, them understanding that it's not only about spending money, but also about a bunch of other strategies.
Absolutely. All right, if there are no other comments about the content itself, I'd like to ask thoughts around who would like to cover items, and some of it could be shared jointly. Like, it doesn't have to be one person for item two or one person for item three, or even one. I, I assume I will be doing item one, but if there are others that would like to, to do that, I'm okay as well.
Item one being the?
The introduction.
The introduction.
I think you should do that, for sure.
Okay, so I'll do item one. So, item two, do we have anybody that would like to cover those items? Again, staff will help with the, the talking points to prepare and be able to speak to those. And again, we, that could be split up between two, and I'd actually recommend it may make it a little easier as well if, if two people wanted to take on item two.
I'm happy to be one of the people.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, anybody else that would like to help with item two?
Do it with Sarah, or if Jennifer?
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Okay, we, we could have multiple there. Does anybody else? Okay, item two, or item three with the capital improvements. Do we have anybody else to talk?
I, I would like to. You on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And Bonnie?
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
We have, there's a couple of different challenges that we have, and Patrick made us aware of some of them. One, one is that the county is asking us to do a 10-year plan, right? And there's a consultant, you know, Chapel Hill is way down the road on their 10-year plan. We haven't started on ours, and their consultant is supposed to take that in. And I just wonder if we want to talk about the expectations on the 10-year capital plan? Because that's something, this might not be the right venue for it, but, but we have to resolve some of that. But, sure, I'm happy to work with Andre on this.
All right, other thoughts around, around this? Dr. Felder, any concerns or thoughts around how we're going to structure?
Can you say more about what you're proposing, Ms. Howser?
About this, my question?
I'm sorry?
About the question that I meant raising? The question is, the county is asking us to do a high-level 10-year plan, capital plan. Chapel Hill is way on their way to it. We have not started on one. And the consultant that the county is hiring is going to weigh in on things like, should we replace facilities or should we continue to renovate them? There's lots of questions that, that we have not asked or answered that the consultant will help with. So, if we do a 10-year plan, it's going to be based on the assumptions we've been operating with in the past. So, that's all.
Yeah, so.
So, what is the, what are you proposing that?
Just asking the commissioners, what, how can we do this in a way? I mean, we could put a placeholder in, we can, you know, or we can use the plan that we have. I don't know what's being proposed, but we don't have a 10-year plan, so we're going to have to.
Patrick, do you want to weigh in on this? I'm not, I just, we have 20 minutes. I just don't know that this would be something we wanted to get into at this meeting, but Patrick.
We'll talk in more detail on the agenda item tonight. So, for the 10-year plan, we have given an estimate. The county has gone both ways. Last year, they said they wanted details within a 10-year plan. We had talked about having a consultant come, consultant come in to help us reassess. But then, the county decided that it was going to be a joint project for a consultant to review the capital plans. And so, this year, they said, don't do the details, just give us the estimates that you were doing for. And so, we're still required to turn in a 10-year plan. Tonight in your packet, you have the nine years projected out of the best estimate and guess we can give at this point in time without a comprehensive facility study. So, your point's well-taken, you know, the work and the effort to put forth a plan that we know is going to change when we get the facility assessment back. So, we're prepared either way.
So, we can do it that way. Things like replacing buildings or excess, extreme renovations are not, are not, would not be discussed. And the consultant may change that on us.
Right, I, I just worry if, you know, bringing this up, I believe their answer is going to be, we have a work group working on that, and that's where we'll get more details. So, it may be more advantageous for us to, to talk about our current challenges before that's done, right? Because we don't know when that'll be done or when we'll get that information back. But, that's just a recommendation that, an approach we can give as, hey, here is our immediate challenges. And that's really what they're wanting to hear about, is what's, what's your challenge now? And then, hey, once we get the, the recommendations back, then we'd have to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we do, implement that?
Okay, so stay focused on the next couple of years and, and getting, taking the funds that we have and, and spending them faster, which I, very, very lovely topic.
But, I think it's fair to just highlight that we do have concerns, because we do need to, we do believe we need replacements and things, but we'll cover that once we get the report, so they know that we're aware of it.
They're, they're asking us to put a 10-year plan together before the consultant's report is done. That's the point. So, we can go with what Patrick's given us, because that's the best that we've got? You know, I've got, I've got a, well, anyway, that's.
And we know it will likely be modified.
Hopefully, it will modify a lot, you know?
All right, any other thoughts or comments?
Just a process question. What is the best way for us to, who are covering certain topics, to get the information from staff? Should, should, like, should I reach out directly?
In terms of the talk, proposed talking points, we worked on that. We will have that to you by tomorrow. And we are also putting together just a few handouts. So, for example, with the first item, the district overview, that slide that you all are very familiar with that shows the pie chart in terms of breakdown by race and number of languages spoken at home and how that's increased, we're going to provide a hard copy of that, because we were told that we can provide handouts. So, we do plan to have a few handouts, and we'll reference in the talking points where they are, so you can refer the county commissioners to the appropriate handout.
All right, Bonnie?
I, I just have one other possible topic, and we heard it from Dr. Felder. Sarah and I heard it at the Family Success Alliance last week. Chapel Hill has pre-K capacity. We have a pre-K waitlist. And I just wonder if that needs to be discussed? Because the county commissioners are very interested in pre-K, and I think we should at least mention it, that we have a waitlist, and we don't want to get confused with the Chapel Hill situation. Different, different situation. Especially, I heard we may be asking for pre-K money. Am I correct? We may, in the budget.
Well, a shifting of money?
That's a shifting, but we could go bigger and just say we need capacity.
So, my only concern would just be again with the time constraints that we have. And I think we have a robust number of, of topics. That would just be my concern. We have 45 minutes to present, and, but of course, it's up to the board.
And I also think, because like a lot of that funding, I think is state funding or federal, a little bit of it, I think, that might get into like a whole can of worms, you know what I mean? So.
They're very interested in it, and I don't know if we need a task force to start to look at it or to really, because we don't ever take it on. And so, this is not a budget conversation, right? Am I correct?
It is not.
Right.
So, do we just, and we could take two, maybe you could speak in the, in the introduction or in the conversation about, what was the second top, the, you know?
So, so just remember, we, we'll, we have another meeting with them in April.
Okay.
So, this is not, this isn't a one and done. We're, we have this discussion, and then we have another one in April. So, we, we have the opportunity to, just to, to really talk about the priorities and really to start talking more on, here are the things we're focused on for next year. Like, a, a big item that's on my mind is redistricting, right? But, we're not talking about it in here, because it's really like right now. And we could talk about, you know, some of our schools with large developments and, and the overview. But then, in April, we can focus more on here, some of the key initiatives that we're looking at and doing, and that can include the, the pre-K as well. But, that's just a recommendation, since we do have a April meeting. All right, any other thoughts, Dr. Felder?
I, I actually think what you're sharing makes sense to me, yeah, for this first meeting, or next meeting.
All right, well, I thank everyone for helping out with this. And I think it's going to be a, a great conversation with the commissioners. And we'll get the, the talking points. Thank you, Dr. Felder, and all staff for helping us get that together as well.
And if I could just add, I don't know if this was stated, certainly, staff will be present, so you can, you know, insert us at any point in time. We're happy to be of support.
Excellent. All right, the next item we have is the Board Committee Feedback Discussion. So, we did get some, some feedback on the, the committees and some of the thoughts around changing the committees. And some of the feedback we got around the committees is moving. So, I'm just sharing these. moving, so I'm just sharing these as, as feedback we got, not, this is not like, I'm recommending anything to the board, this is just feedback. So one of the feedbacks was potentially moving to a work session for the committees. Obviously, there's some challenges with that, including a lot of our availability to do that. But that's one of the recommendations. One of the other recommendations was potentially looking at the, the committees and allowing all board members to participate in them. There are challenges with that as well, because it'll become a mini board meeting, but just in a committee form. But those are some of the, the big points of the, the committee. I do know one of the feedback as well was extending the time of the committees to a longer period. So instead of an hour each, which was, I think many people described it as speed dating or, you know, rushing through, to change that to maybe at least an hour and a half. An hour and a half to, you know, allow that extra time for committees to have that discussions. The second other option that was given was concern that when a meeting is on a specific day and everybody's planning on it, and if somebody can't be there or two people can't be there, it collapses the meetings and now you have to cancel them. So would it make sense to try to put it on two different days and give that ability? So not a single person missing or two people may not collapse the, the meetings. So with that, I will just step back and let discussion on this for thoughts around it. On what board members are thinking around the, the committee structure. And, and I just want to say, as we talk about it, that I, I want to thank everybody for us trying something different. And Dr. Felder, I appreciate this, the staff and you, you know, trying to figure out how we could do this more efficiently. And I think as we evolve, we're going to get to a, a much better place on how to manage these meetings. So thoughts around this?
Carrie? Yeah, I appreciate that we tried it. And, you know, going from last year and previous years where we had three hours per committee per month, which often did get canceled because it was like too, you know, it also was a commitment we really couldn't maintain. It was kind of a big shift to the one hour, but there are a lot of benefits out of that, I thought, throughout the fall. And then on the, I don't want it to be about people's personal schedules and opinions. My personal schedule has changed, so committee meetings have been hard in 2023. I do, you know, for some people like myself, the work sessions in the evenings work better. And I do believe that some other districts do that. Like I think Chapel Hill does at their committee meetings are not in the nine-to-five timeframe. I'm curious about the idea, if we were to do that, to do like to, you know, either to have one night where it's all of the committees or it, I'm curious what benefits having work sessions that were essentially committee meetings might have, pulling some information topics out of the regular board meetings, you know? So, so I mean, I'm curious, and I'm also curious, the other reason why I wouldn't have advocated for that before was it seemed like it was beneficial to staff to have committee meetings during the day. So I feel like there are pros and cons to evening work sessions. But it was nice to have the board budget retreat, which was essentially, you know, replacing committee meetings in a sense. So I'm personally open to that idea.
So just a, a couple of thoughts around it that Dr. Felder and Neil and I have talked around is, if we do a work session, then the chair runs the meeting, meaning the physical chair of the school board versus me going, oh, okay, so, you know, we're talking about academics. Okay, Sarah, you're the chair for the night. So it, that's one challenge in it. The, the second was, to your point, was trying to make sure that we were trying to meet during the staff's time. But I, again, for me, you know, nighttime's better. But the other challenge around that was making sure how the material was generated in that sense. If we went to work session, do we not have chairs anymore of the subcommittees? And I, I think there's a lot of power in each person running a subcommittee or a committee itself. But again, those, those are not issues that can't be overcome. I don't know how we would manage around the, it's a board meeting and the.
Yeah, just briefly on that point, Mr. Atherton, I think you're right. If it's a, if it's a meeting of the school board, the chair by policy and longstanding practice everywhere is the presiding officer. I guess the only other thing I could think is you could change the, in theory, and I'm not advocating any, any position on this, just giving you your options, you could increase the size of the committees and even have a, a committee that consists of every member of the board. That's called a committee of the whole under Robert's rules. And I, I'd have to check Roberts to confirm, but I think you could designate a, a different chair of the committee of the whole. Important consideration there is that changes quorum requirements. You now have need a majority of the entire board to show up to even have the committee meeting. So you need a minimum of four out of seven board members to even be able to conduct business. And then we'd have to sort through, I believe you could appoint a different chair of the committee of the whole based on the subject matter. But I just.
I think that's a really good option, that's a really good idea. The other option might be for the committee chair and the board chair to jointly plan the agenda for the work session. So as opposed, right, because we do really want the committee chairs to have a role as opposed to, right?
Agreed.
I know you do, so. Yeah, I think that's a great option to. I, I have another question, and that's the idea of monthly meetings. And if we went to some more of a work session, you know, does every committee need to meet every month? There are some natural times for the student achievement committee to meet. There are natural times for the budget committee to meet. So we could create an agenda that's more aligned to the business of the district. So and by the way, we don't have any committees around retention, about our strategic goal around teacher retention and, and recruitment. So we need, we need something there, so.
Sure.
Yeah, just that point, Bonnie, that you made about, do the committees need to meet every month? I mean, it fits, my overall sense of the student achievement committee is, an hour was never enough time. An hour and a half has been incredibly tight. And I have wondered if we had the meetings less frequently, but a full three hours? If we couldn't time those, I mean, you can predict, you know, you can predict the times of the school year. If we center it on like, where are we in mid, middle of the year assessment results? And a sort of middle of the year update on all of the strategies we're doing to impact that, you know? That, that kind of model makes some sense to me, just in terms of frequency. One other piece, you know, the, the daytime, nighttime is a, is it just a real pickle? I think, I mean, it seems to me like there's a, a, maybe a quorum of the board right now that finds daytime much harder right now. You know, there have been other times, I think, when maybe that isn't true. So and if the topics, if student achievement were quarterly or something and it were in the evening, then at least we wouldn't be every month adding an additional like monthly meeting. You know, it could be that those staff members would not necessarily need to attend all of those evenings, but just the quarterly, which could be helpful.
Other thoughts?
One of, and that's just policy, the policy committee. The policy committee is just a lot of words, you know, just a lot of, you know, hands-on work that I, you know, I would just, I, I would be happy to just keep the policy committee as a committee of three and, or committee of, I, I don't know what it would be, but I think the policy committee doesn't need the entire board to get together to put these policies together. So I just would be happy to leave that.
And on a different token, the student achievement committee, it has felt like a real loss to no longer have every, I know that it sounds like everyone participating was not appropriate in the past. But when everybody could come, it made much more sense. Now that it's only a few members, it's much more difficult. It, that feels difficult. Every, every topic I consider, I'm like, I want this on a board meeting instead, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, just to highlight that, that every board member can attend. It's just them participating at the, the table. And I get it, it's, it's different. I just, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight about the, the evening meetings, right? A couple of things, as one, besides staff, there will be events that are in the district that we may not be able to attend, depending on when it is. I would discourage Thursdays because that's a popular day for things. But, you know, one of the, the things we talked about too, if we go back to the original discussion way back, was, hey, how can we reduce the load of staff and make it, you know, easier for that? So there's the balance. And, and I agree with, with you, Sarah, an hour for the policy, you, you couldn't even finish thoughts like, hey, what are people's, this one's a discussion item. And you're like, you know, hey, you got five minutes left. And it's like, what? You know, so I, I agree that the time increase is definitely needed. But some of the, or other board members that haven't spoke, do y'all have some thoughts around the committee meetings?
I think the time issue has been an issue, especially for achievement committee. And I agree too that maybe going to less meetings with a little more time might be a better way to look at, especially achievement. I find it very beneficial. I think everything we've done has been very beneficial. And as somebody new to the board, it's been very interesting to, to get all that information. I'm looking forward to having the testing coordinator be with us and, and take us through all of that as she gets settled into her new role. But I think it's been very beneficial, but I think we could possibly do it a few less, less meetings with a three-hour timeframe. The two-hour timeframe we had last month was outstanding.
Yeah.
It was good.
It might not need to be three, it'd be at least two, I think.
Thanks.
Dr. Atherton, if I may just add one, one thought to Ms. Purcell's comment. If, if there is interest in having less frequent meetings, but longer meetings, just as a, a side note, committees like the board can also schedule special meetings. So you still would have the option to add additional meetings with 48 hours notice to the public at any time, following the same procedures you use for your, for your board meetings.
And always it could be brought to the full board to do a retreat like we did.
Absolutely.
Budget. Other thoughts?
Just. How does it go? Andre?
Andre.
And, and all meetings have to be, so we decided that, you know, we wanted to do, you know, for, for instance, community engagement committee. I mean, I think we do, we could do a good job with, you know, meeting monthly and, and using that hour and hour and a half timeframe. But does that mean that if, if decided that the other committees wanted to meet maybe quarterly or, or whenever and have that longer meeting hour, does that mean that the community engagement committee would have to do the same?
No. In fact, that's what we were talking about is like, like policy has stuff that comes up that is state statute and we have to go approve it.
Yeah.
So it doesn't make sense for all. And for example, after the budget gets to presenting to the, to the board and those discussions, they don't necessarily need to meet for two hours after that either. But that, that may be something the chair works with the superintendent on what makes sense for frequency and timing. And a thought that occurred to me is, you know, we, we're talking like this is binary. And maybe it is, there are committees that are, that we have at night and there are some that we have during the day and they could swap. But, you know, specifying here's going to be where we have those, that could allow accommodations for any of us that work and can't do it or trying to help staff too by having some in the day. So we could go into this hybrid mode of, and that may allow for more people to attend for some of the meetings too.
I also think, sorry, Carrie, I also think the question of like a committee of the whole versus a small committee, like I don't think that we need a quorum of four board members to discuss every single policy. I mean, you know, they already come to the board later, you know? So that's, that's an opportunity for us to talk about that if we want to. But student achievement feels to me a little bit different. I'm not sure really about budget.
Right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, another way where it doesn't need to be binary or identical committee to committee, you know, like community engagement could have, like one time Jennifer and Bonnie and I met like at five o'clock at the, the boardroom. You know, you could have like, in January, you meet and do a planning because then in February, you're doing a town hall.
Right.
And then you don't need a February meeting because you're already doing a town hall or a listen and learn or whatever. You know, versus, I, I really think again, like student achievement, it could benefit our regular board meetings if we have like an evening meeting that everyone can attend, learning things. So we don't need them all presented again, which otherwise we do. You know, if we have a student achievement meeting that most members of the public aren't able to attend, not all board members, you do want to share that all again.
Right.
In an evening, regular board meeting. But it seems like that committee would benefit.
If I could just chime in on the student achievement committee meeting. So the only thing I would want us to take into consideration would be the meetings where schools are invited. I, you know, would encourage us to have those meetings, which I think would be the majority of those meetings where schools would be invited to not necessarily happen in the evening, like around this time. It's just too late and then turn around and have to be fresh for children the next day. So if we could keep that in mind with regards to the planning of student achievement committee meetings, maybe there could be some, but if schools are involved, I would hope during the day or some portion of the day, evenings and night are difficult.
So Dr. Felder, just for clarity for myself, is, when does the evening start with? If the committee wanted to do, I'm saying, we're thinking 4:30 to something or five to something, where it doesn't go, where the committee says, we're not going to go past seven? Would that, would that be, I, I, I don't even know what the committee's thinking. I'm just throwing it out there as, is there a time that helps? Because, you know, some of us that work and try to get there, the closer it is to that time, that's all I'm thinking.
I think Wake does theirs at like 3:00 PM or something often, which again, may still be too early for some of the board members who work during the day. So I.
I think that's too early for our principals too. Three o'clock is really pretty early.
Oh, yeah.
Primetime.
The difference, yeah, yes, during dismissal, yes, we should.
Right, but four or five, and remember, there's no recognition, there's no closed session. We go right to work, do two or three hours, we're done. All right, so we can get out a lot earlier if we plan it well.
Okay, so we've got a lot of ideas on the table. Definitely want to try to get us to some, some thoughts around this. There's a couple of ways we could approach this. One is, all of us have heard the feedback and let the chairs work with the superintendent to come up with the, the best plan. Or we can try to decide this as a board. I think the one that may, we may need to decide really is the item on, is it the full board or not? I think that's the one we, we all need to agree on, because that's a commitment that we'll all be making for any committee that we extend to the full board, so.
So, so I'm hearing clear, first of all, one size doesn't fit all. So for a committee like policy, it doesn't need to be the full board. But for student achievement, for budget, it really makes a difference to have the full board's input, especially if we, you know, because in the past, that's how we really operated. So, and that means, full board means four, that, that if someone's not interested, as long as we have a quorum of four, we're, that's sufficient, correct?
Correct.
So, so I think full board, I, I like full board for budget, I like it for student achievement. And what about, and for, for, you know, Carrie made a great point about for.
Well, let's, let's try to close on that one first.
Okay.
Just, just so we make some progress on this. So how, how does everyone else feel about having the achievement committee meeting as full board? Is, are there concerns with that? Okay, so Neil, we'll need some help on how do we structure that to allow? Because I, I would prefer that if we do have that meeting, that it would be a committee of full board with the chair of that committee running the meeting.
Yeah, in that case, I would, I would suggest it be a committee of the whole. It would be a, we could set up a regular meeting schedule or, or just schedule special meetings with at least 48 hours notice of a committee of the whole. with at least 48 hours notice of a committee of the whole. It would be chaired by the chair of the committee, the full board. The committee of the whole consists of every member of the board, a quorum is four, you need, you need a minimum of four to show up to conduct business. And that could be done, I believe, I can check the, your policies perhaps now while you're, while you're deliberating, but I believe you can just do that because the, you know, I don't think you need any special authorization in a new policy or anything like that. You just know, as long as the meeting's properly noticed and available and accessible to the public, I think you can just start scheduling those meetings.
I believe we would have to vote on it based on the policy just for that change.
Under, under local policy, because under state statute, you can just notice the meeting.
Can you just check?
Which, which policy are you?
The committee structure.
It's 2230.
And so, okay, so while he, so we've agreed that full board on that. Policy to keep to the three member. Okay, next, we would have the budget committee.
Yeah, same as student achievement, go to the full board.
Okay. Does everybody agree full board for that?
I think my question, my feelings about that depend on whether it's like daytime or nighttime or, you know, there's, there's balance there with like staff time. What feels potentially different about budget and policy is that if other board members who were not on the committee wanted to provide input, they could just email it and it's sort of a straightforward thing you can email about. Yeah.
I thought the budget retreat was an example of how the whole board would work. And imagine the county commissioners, first of all, I don't even know, there's a whole capital part that we haven't really taken on at all. And when the county commissioners come back to us with their budget approval, it would be hard as a policy, as a committee of three to make decisions for the board. I'd want to, certainly want to hear from the whole board about how the board feels about whatever we get back and how to prioritize. So I just have a hard time as a committee of three prioritizing for the board. If they're directing us and say, we want you to think this through, that's different, maybe, you know, but we even have a little bit of leeway if we had the full board, two or three people can go work on it without worrying about it being a, right?
But I think we could do a retreat to cover the priority versus every meeting because there's a lot of those meetings that are really digging into other aspects than the prioritization. I'm concerned with it being the full board myself. I'm okay with us designating, hey, in the larger schedule, hey, we're going to do a board retreat for the specific purpose of feeding into the budget committee and then maybe there's another one further out. But I, yeah. Other, others thoughts around that?
I mean, I guess I kind of agree that, I think there are times when it's important for the whole board to be there, but then there are probably other months where it doesn't need to be. And I'm trying to remember the cycle of the different, you know, all through the spring, we have numerous budget centered topics where we need and would have the whole board.
Right, I mean, one of the topics going to come up is fees, right? And so does the whole board want to weigh in on fees?
So the fees can, just like policy, those fees can be sent to every board member and you can ask for feedback to be sent. And as long as you don't respond back, you're within the parameters of the committee. And that's what we're, I mean, I just, we'll take this moment to thank Ms. Hatcher for posting our policies and getting them up there with help on, you know, allowing everybody to see them to comment way before the meeting. And I think we could do a similar thing with, with the budget or even capital. It could be sent out and ask, you have any questions or comment, please send those to chair and the superintendent.
Okay, I, you know, I, most of the committee meetings I've been on, because once it's three, other board members can't participate. And in the past, when the topics have been of interest, the board was invited to participate. So do we, if we go to the full board again, only four people have to show up. The whole board doesn't have to show up. I'm just saying that it's, it's very restricted. An hour is not enough time to do the work, so.
Yeah, we, I think we've already decided that the committees would readjust their time need for based on when it is. And then also, for example, the academic committee may not meet every month. It may be as needed and that time may increase for those and may shrink.
And same thing for budget. I don't know if budget has to meet every month either. So I have, that's why again, if we align the committees to the cycle of business, I think we would have, be able to put together a smart schedule. But I'll go either way, I just think we're going to find ourselves doing a lot of retreats around budget.
Well, we, I mean, again, we're evolving this, so.
Right, so.
We could try the first step.
There's retreats and there's also bringing topics to the board meeting, you know?
Yeah, directly.
Yeah.
Right, the benefit of the committees or the retreat is it's two hours or three hours of focused work. And when you're playing the numbers and, you know, poor Rhonda has to prepare for it. So it's, it's, by the time it comes to a board meeting, it needs to be pretty well thought through and solid, so. I'll go however the, the board, I'll go with the board's wish.
So Mr. Atherton, to your question about mechanics of establishing changes in committees, your, your policy currently establishes three standing committees, policy, budget and student achievement. It does not say how many members are on the committee, it says the chair appoints them. So I, you know, I think arguably at least you could appoint a committee of the whole, a policy committee of the whole, and it would just be, it would still be the policy committee. It would just consist of all members of the board. I think it probably would be prudent to bring this policy to the policy committee, speaking of committees. If you're going to change the structure as, you know, significantly as compared to the status quo, just so that your policy neatly aligns with practice. But I don't think there's an impediment. The policy doesn't prevent you from, from saying, you know, henceforth or for twice a year or however often you want, you're going to schedule, say, a budget committee meeting of the whole.
I just want to, the other thing that that does is it gives every board member a vote. When they show up, they get a vote because in the past, that wasn't the case either. You know, and if a board member's interested in a topic, they should have a chance to vote on it.
But the committees just make recommendations.
I understand.
The voting is not binding.
I understand, but, but you know that the committees vote on what goes forward to the board.
Voting, a recommendation, yeah.
So, so it does make the, I, I like that a lot. I like committees of the whole and except for policy, because I'm not sure that four people want to go to policy every.
Just also wanted to add briefly that your policy has a section on ad hoc committees. I don't know that if you're using those now, but that's another option that you have. And the policy says that ad hoc committees are appointed by the chair with approval of the board. So that would require board action to establish a new ad hoc committee, which is just another tool in your toolbox.
So technically, the community engagement is by definition an ad hoc, correct?
I think it must be since it's.
It's not a standing.
It's not a standing committee, correct?
So it sounds like the action after here is I need to send out an email to assign for the academic committee of everyone else to complete that portion and then.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
So procedurally, I just need to assign everybody to the committee because that's what policy says. It's just the formality of me sending out an email for if we make changes, well, if there was changes to community engagement, that would have to be done through a different process is all that's being said.
I have to add one other thing, and that's on this committees of three, under the new, under the current structure, two committee members are not allowed to have a casual conversation about the business. And that's really restrictive, you know, because now, you know, you could talk to any board member about anything, but if you want to have a conversation with one of your fellow committee members about a topic, if there's only three people on the committee, you can't do that. So that's, which is another reason to make the committees board, board wide committees, you know?
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just, I have concerns with all of us trying to commit to every meeting that's going to happen. I mean, we would have to.
Four people.
No, no, but I'm just saying, how do you know which four are going to show up consistently? That's my concern is trying to, one, say, yes, we're all going, you know, hey, you're going to get at least four. Who are the four that will say, I will always be there? Or, you know, because you could run in a scenario where, hey, five people are not planning on going because of work or child or something happening. And now you can't have a committee meeting because nobody's quote committed to being there every time. So that's, that's the trade off.
It's happened twice so far with community engagement, right? It's happened. So it's, it's happening. So how do we, if the assumption is the whole board is going, can we as a courtesy just let people know when we can't make it?
I, I do think that the, the issue with the community engagement attendance could be solved by a different time, right? So there's, there's different solutions for different problems potentially. I can't, I can't tell if there's like a majority of people in favor of a committee of the whole for the, for the budget committee.
We could do a quick polling. I mean, a polling may be the quickest way. So I, I guess the first question I have is, is the not talking within the committees an issue that the board wants to solve by making it a committee of the whole? I mean, I, I'm just asking. Okay, well.
It all comes back to the board. Everything that's done in the committee all comes back to the board.
Correct.
For vote, correct?
Yes, yes, it does. So it's, they are recommendations to the board, even if it's the whole board.
I don't think the problem is the, when it's solved, I think the problem is committees are naturally discovery organizations. They're organizations that are trying to think things through and sometimes you just need to talk to people offline and say, hey, what are you thinking? You know, are we on the right track on this or you have some other thoughts? And I just don't, but by the time you get into the committee, the agenda's been set, the staff's done a lot of work on it and, and you really, you know, if, if you and the committee are not thinking in the same way, you've just wasted a lot of people's time. So that's, that's how I'm thinking about it.
Carrie?
I agree with Bonnie's points and I'm, I'm open minded to the budget committee being a committee of the whole. I guess for two, two, if two things are true, if one, it's not every month, you know, like, and, and I don't think it has to be the same for people every time, right?
It does not.
So I mean, you know, if Bonnie's, if Bonnie's planning a march in May one and she finds out there are four people who can do, you know, I don't know, if it's not too logistically challenging to plan in advance and know who can commit to that day and time, I'm, I'm open minded to it because I think there are good reasons to do it. But I also hear Will's point that like, we can't all do, you know, four committee meetings a month at night and everyone be there all the time, like that won't work. But that's not what we're saying either.
There's also, that's a great, great point, Carrie. And the other part is that not everybody's interested in the same topic. So when the agenda's capital, it might, you might have very different people showing up when the topic is the operating budget.
So we've, we've got to move forward. We've got several other agenda items. So what I'm going to do is just do a quick poll to just see where we are because I agree, I don't know where we are on this. So Jennifer, what's your feeling on making the budget committee a full, full board versus not? You're okay with it? Okay. Sarah?
I'd rather keep it as a small committee.
Okay, keep.
I'm, I'm fine with it becoming a committee of the whole.
Okay.
I can do a committee of the whole as long as we're juggling times.
Okay. Committee of the whole, okay. All right. By far, the, the board is a majority on committee of the whole. And the, the comment from most everybody was, which will be including myself, is, you know, just expect that not all, not all of us can be there for all the meetings for sure. So that means we wouldn't need to necessarily have a retreat either.
Right.
So, all right. The last committee is the community engagement. So your thoughts around it, Andre?
Sure. So in meeting with Dr. Felder and Mr. Smith, we came up with a format. We also thought about a name change of the town halls. Instead of calling it town halls, we would call it listen and learn for the simple reason that we're there to listen and not give feedback to the community on, you know, our opinions, you know, without the full board being there. So we did discuss that and we also talked about the timeframes of those meetings, the locations. So we did go with a 90 minute timeframe, 30 minutes. The first 30 minutes of that would be to feed the families. So families come in and eat for their first 30 minutes. We would provide childcare if needed. And then the last 60 minutes would be for meeting and interpretation. And so we came up with three major topics, which would be what is going well, what are the challenges and what information do you need? Each one of those questions would provide 15 minutes per each question for folks to come up and speak on those three topics. But as, as folks came into the initial meetings, there would be post-its, pull it up here, posted notes, which would provide like parking lot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Renshaw. You've moved to the next agenda item.
Okay.
We didn't close on what we're doing with the community engagement, if it's going to be a full, full board or just leave as is. Do you have a preference on that? I just want to make sure I close out on that one last item. I apologize.
No, you're fine.
So do, do you feel like the full board needs to be involved or you're good with how it is today?
Well, I'm, I'm good, but I just wanted to get the feedback from the full board to see if, how they felt about the ideas that we came up with.
Okay, so the composition of the three member versus full board, is everybody okay with the way it is today or have concerns that it should be open to full? Everybody's comfortable with it?
I mean, I think it kind of can have like the planning part can be the committee, but then the full board's invited to the listen and learn.
Right. Oh, of course, yes, yes. Yeah, we've just, he's, he's on the next agenda topic.
Right, I'm just saying, for that reason, because the nature of the committee is to set up listen and learns, I think it's fine for it to not be the full board, in my opinion.
Any, any differing opinions on that? Okay, so we'll close that, the committees with that and the chairs to start working with the superintendent on the changes.
I just had one comment because Carrie reminded us of, there were times that she and Jennifer and I just had a cup of coffee and talked about, you know, we didn't ask the staff to do any work, we just had a casual meeting of the community engagement, what do we want to do? So there's that opportunity also to really not make it a major board, a major burden for the district. So just, just wanted to.
Okay, all right.
And sorry. Excuse the sidebar here, Dr. Felder and I were just discussing that. I'm not sure if it was clear to me at least, if there was a decision to change course with respect to the student achievement committee or the policy committee meeting. I heard, heard some discussion about keeping policy as is, was my understanding.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just go through my notes.
Great.
So policy committee, keep as is with increase to time to make sure we have adequate time to cover topics. The student achievement to be the, the full board, member of the, everyone a member of that. The budget committee as, as well, a whole, the whole board. And then the, the community engagement to keep as is with, as things come up, the board would be invited to attend those activities themselves.
Okay.
And so I'll need to send out an email that just modifies the committee to make everyone.
Make them committees of the whole, but they'll be, the presiding officer in each case will be the. case will be the committee chair that you've already appointed.
Yes.
That works.
I think there's also a question, too, at least for student achievement, about the cadence and length of the meetings, so, and aligning that more to particular flow of the year. So that's something that I imagine I can work with Dr. Felder and Dr. Green to come up with.
Absolutely. I think that's within the purview of the committee chair, working in, in consultation with the administration as to logistics, staff availability, everything like that.
Right.
Absolutely. Thank you for making sure we clarified to everybody. All right. Sorry, Mr. Richmond. Go ahead. No, go ahead. I-
I'm passionate.
No, I'm, I'm glad you are. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so back to the, the listen and learns that we had discussed, we picked a couple of locations just to do for this year. And those timeframes would be the end of April and the end of May. And then we can see how we did with those two, and prepare for next school year to do them throughout the county. And if Mr. Smith or Ms., Dr. Felder would like to interject?
I, no, I think you touched on most everything that we discussed in community engagement.
So, thank you, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. So one of, some of the issues that I know had come up, obviously, were in the, in the format itself, in many ways, the invitation is going to drive the kind of feedback that you receive. And so there's a big question, I think, that you all, as members of the board, will want to discuss in appropriate formats, to discern whether you want to have an open-ended session or whether you want to really target this towards matters that are pressing before the board. That's something very important for the board to, to bring to this, because when you promote it to the public, and, and again, I think there was, there was conversation about delineating the board, this is a board initiative. And so the question of how it's being promoted, how it's being structured, how it's being staffed, how it's being funded, I think those are definitely some areas that, that we're still seeking clarity on, in terms of whether, because it was presented very early on, we want to make sure this is not something additional for staff, but that the board wants to reach out and make engagement with the community, picking two locations that are in areas that may have been geographically and culturally not as richly represented before the board in times past. So I think there's, there are several different kind of areas of concern that I think staff have been talking about to make sure that that's all clarified as you get ready for the end of April and the end of May. But those, those conversations have been very fruitful with Mr. Richmond in the, in the interim while the community engagement committee has been on something of a hiatus.
Carrie?
Can I make a comment on one of those issues from my past experience with the, like, the translation service? I remember when we were trying to set these up in the past, we wanted it to be board-funded, but the feedback we got from staff was that, like, there was, because of the contract that the district already had, it didn't make sense for us to hire separate translation services. So the plan was going to be to, to use the, right? Has that changed?
So we have multiple ways of dealing with that. There are, you can set up small groups where you, where people can, and that's something that we've seen recently. For instance, when the Orange Partnership came to Orange High School, we were able to set up small tables where individuals could work together. The quick real question is, to whom, with whom to work? Chiklay does a lot of work for us locally, and so they provide a lot of support, and they know our, they know our issues, they know the terminology, they know the community very well, FSA and other groups. I mean, there, there are ways to get at the services. Again, the big question really is, to what extent will cabinet leadership, support staff, and others be part of the scheduling, implementation, follow-through, information gathering? And there are just so many things around facilitating these type of meetings, including food, childcare, preparing the location. Really, the big question is, how do you intend, we want to be able to support what you're doing in terms of making this opportunity available to the public, but we also want to honor what the board said, which was, we don't want to make this something additional for staff. I think that, that's, that's one area where we're, we're really waiting for guidance from the board.
Yeah, I have, when we started talking about this, I imagined the board as invited guests of the community. So the idea of providing childcare or translation service, that would be up to the host, which isn't us, you know? And even the agenda, so I'm going to make, if Mount Zion, they have their own educational committee, Lattesville Grove has one, The Grange has other interests, but I would think they would be asking us to come, and they would say, here's what we would like to talk about. Now, there's probably some things on our mind, certainly redistricting is something we need to introduce to the community. It's a great way to do it. But again, I see this as, you know, and if they don't want us, then certainly there's no reason for us to show up. But I don't think we want to create meetings. We want to be available to talk to the community, because they want to know what's happening in their schools. And I can tell you, I get comments like, hey, you guys are here all the time when you want to get elected, but we haven't, we don't see you after that. So that's the, that's what I'm, how I'm thinking about this. Maybe I have that wrong, but that's how I was thinking about this.
So I, I appreciate what you're sharing, Ms. Hauser, but we've not planned in that way or through that lens at all, right? And so two locations have been identified, Mount Zion and is it Eflin Cheeks Community Center, the Eflin Community Center. As noted in the abstract, you know, there are three guiding questions, you know, just what is going well, challenges, et cetera. What would community members like more information to engage with the board on, and really targeting those pockets of our community that historically have not engaged as much with the board. And so seeing this almost as a pilot year to see how this goes, but certainly, to your point, we do need to have meetings where we get at redistricting in particular, and that be a focus of the conversations, but really opening it up for people to, members of the community to talk to the board.
Yeah. The essence of my point is, have we talked to Mount Zion and asked them if they would like us to come? That's, that's really what I'm trying to get to, is that Mount Zion want us, does Eflin Cheeks want us?
Mr. Richmond, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've, I've had feedback from Mount Zion saying that they wanted to host there. So, and I've definitely had feedback from Eflin as well. So those were the, you know, the first two sites that, that introduced their willingness to, to host it. So-
Great. And have they said what they envision it to be? Have you talked to them about the style, the content?
No.
Because that's, okay. Well, that's great. That's a great start.
Carrie?
Well, okay, first of all, those are really good points about who's providing the childcare and like, you know, because you all do it so well, we don't want to be defaulting on the staff doing it when we said this is not something rest of the staff to do. So we do need to think about those particulars. But I do think, Andre, what you're saying about the listen and learns, it sets an expectation for what we're doing. You know, listening and learning isn't, we're presenting redistricting, it isn't, you know, we're bringing a topic. I think that would be not a good plan. And, and it also is the continuity with the listen and learns that Dr. Felder began pre-COVID. I like, I like the intentionality of what we're doing is to listen and learn. I think it gets really, we get ourselves in trouble if we start planning to bring topics, or, you know, what do you want us to talk about? We want you to talk about this. That's really not our, our job. And I think, I think sticking to listen and learns is, is what we should do personally.
Yep. So I'll say that I do think we should have childcare and food to encourage and show that we recognize different situations and that we're going to have an open space for, for people to attend. You know, I remember when we first started talking about this, one of the things we got feedback on is, hey, I get three minutes at the mic, and then I walk away and nothing happens. And so how do I, you know, get more time, where, where you can have a more in-depth conversation? And, you know, we did the virtual coffee sessions back when. But I think having a structure where people feel like, okay, I, I have something I'm concerned with, I'm going to come up for challenges. And I, I think one of the things we may need to do is have a area set up or something where people have a specific question. Hey, I want to register for pre-K, how do I do that? We can't say, well, put that under what's going well, right? We would need, okay, we can help you with that, if you'd like, we, let's get your information down and we'll get back to you, you know? Because there will be people showing up that just have a question, because we saw in the listen and learns that they would be like, I just need this.
And that reminds me of one of the things we talked about, Mr. Richmond, in the last meeting, would be to have on, out on tables and, and such, where folks can do just that. So if there's more information they want, they can leave their information and tell us what it's about, and we would follow up. We did that with the listen and learns that were facilitated back in 2019, early 2020. And so there was follow-up in that regard. Yeah.
Even virtually, you know, they could go online, that, that idea came up to, to where digitally information could be submitted back to the district, so we can gain ideas that way.
Well, I, I just appreciate, you know, the committee getting to that point where we're actually going to, to be out and, you know, us be accessible, that's not during a meeting in the three minutes, and give us a chance to talk one-on-one as well. I think it's, you know, a wonderful opportunity for all of us, and also to learn about things we don't even realize are concerns from, from our community.
Right.
Sarah?
I agree, and I like the general approach here. I think one of the things, it sounds like, Mr. Smith, you were saying is that you need some direction from the board on where the funding should come from for things, and, you know, how to honor our desire to not use staff time when actually setting a thing like this up takes staff time, like literally physically going there and-
Or, or it doesn't, to, to Ms. Hauser's point, that there are, there are ways to create synergies-
Making the photocopies ourselves of the little car. I mean, you know, it's just, I mean, that is a way we could do it.
We could hire pizza to come-
We could-
Hire Domino's.
Right. I mean, I, I'm assuming the food and the interpretation, unless there's something weird about the contract, and the childcare that we could spend out of our budget. If there is a staffing need or something, maybe there's a temporary terminating contract. I just think, like, that might be a way to honor that.
So there, there is an option that we could utilize, which would not only help us, but also benefit several of our clubs, like Beta Club, FFA, 4H has community service time, and they're quite frequently used for events like this, that they could, can you help serve pizza? You know, can you help check people in? Can you help do this? And, you know, it, it is a great opportunity, you know, even, as I said, FFA gets community service time that they need to meet. So we could leverage within our own district to help with that, at the same time, give them the community time as well. I would recommend us leveraging that. I mean, the interpret, interpretive services, I, I do think we're going to have to just, you know, sign the check and, and make that happen.
So I, I realize that time is, time is wearing on, and y'all have other agendas, but what I would just, in terms of reflecting on this, I draw your attention to where the board is irreplaceable. Staff can answer lots of questions about what families need. So when they show up and need some things, having an easy receptacle or vehicle to get those concerns is like, we love that. We love showing up and, and having a table or whatever, and people being able to get their concerns addressed. That's awesome, right? Great customer service. Finding volunteers instead of paying staff to do things like childcare, set up the space, even facilitate the meeting, you may find volunteer facilitators willing to help. Finding the food, again, that's the sort of thing that, again, that some of these locations may be so happy to have you, you can find some synergies and partnerships where people may even provide the food. The one thing that the board can do that no one else can do is to actually be there and listen as the elected officials. The, the one thing that, that you all have set this up for is to be present to communities and individuals that don't necessarily feel like they've had the opportunity to be heard, or that the distance between the board and that community has been bridged. So everything else can be handled. It's all logistics, creativity, spontaneity. I mean, we're all for that, right? We would just encourage you all to help us help you, right? We need some guidance in terms of presenting this to the public in a way that they can then show up and feel welcome. So really, we're still, I think, waiting for a little more, a little more clarity. The, the idea, again, Mr. Richmond, thank you for helping to really keep this moving along, so that there's something ready to present to the board that we can then take to the public. Ms. Hauser, I'm sorry, I, I, maybe I shouldn't.
No, I, I'm still a little confused on whose meeting this is. So if we go to Mount Zion, is it their meeting? And do we need to at least talk to, or are we promoting it, and Mount Zion is just providing the space for us?
I think Dr. Felder was trying to provide some clarity on that, that this was brought to staff as a board initiative, that the board wanted to go to the public and create forums where board members could hear from individuals and communities. And that's what part of why the, the location and the, and the general format was chosen.
I, I understand. So I guess my question is, if we go to Mount Zion, it's a, it's a, an intimate, their intimate space. If we go to the community, the Cedar Grove Center, a little bit different, but if we go to Mount Zion, you know, are we asking them to use their space, and we're going to invite, tell anyone that lives around Mount Zion that we're going to be there?
I can't, I can't speak to that. Mr. Richmond may know how that conversation-
I'll get clarity.
Yeah, we need clarity on that, because I think that for 90 minutes, we're providing food and childcare, and we're telling people we're going to mess up their space. And I just think we want to make sure that's what they want.
And we're not going to mess up-
I understand, but you understand, but we're going to have people eating there.
We're going to leave it in a better condition than we found it.
Well, but that's, that's resources too, right?
Yeah, I don't mind picking up a broom or a mop.
Okay.
Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the board already had a discussion about this question that you're raising, Bonnie, and decided to do this format, rather than the format of the place brings the agenda. But I do think, like, the places, all of our places in that general vicinity are partners, the places you've been going around and sharing the strategic plan, like, we should reach out to all of them to market this and encourage them to send people.
Right.
I, I believe, and I, I understand the agenda part. I'm not concerned, I'm concerned, the only thing I'm concerned about is, we're talking about it, and we're going, you know, so I can imagine picking a couple of spaces because they provide proximity. We're a very big county, and all of a sudden, we're in Cedar Grove, or we're in Eflin, or we're in New Hope, and we provided proximity to the board in some, a few central locations. So that's, you know, is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about Antioch Church wants to have us, or Mount Zion Church wants to have us, or Eflin Cheeks invites their churches? I, I just am not sure exactly how, how we're looking at this, because I think it's different. If it's their meeting, if it's more their-
It's not. It's-
It's our meeting in a central location.
It's the board meeting that's been invited to their house to host for us to engage the community. That is the- The method is that? Mr. Richmond, is that accurate?
Yes, sir. That's right. And, and to be clear, it's not going to be, you know, these two aren't going to be the last, only meetings. I mean-
Understand.
We'll be able to go out and do more within different locations, so.
I just, what, you know, when, when you go to their meetings, they get the people there, and they take care of all of that, and they, but that's fine if, if we want to, if it's more about the location and being proximate, that's, that, I get that. I understand.
All right. So are there any other clarity that, that we should give?
Once, once all these issues are set, the dates, the locations, the times, the offering, we would be glad to support by sending this out to the media. You know, I mean, like, there, there are some things that we would naturally and normally do to help us help you. And so it's really requesting information from, either from the committee, which we, we can do either, you know, by email, Mr. Richmond can help us if, if he is able to, you know, collect all of that information in a way that we can then deliver it to the public, to make these invitations well-known, and also provide things like flyers and those sorts of things that you can use geographically, so that you can target members of the community. A letter, maybe something appropriate, that, that may be something you all would want to send as opposed to from, from, from staff. A letter from the board to, to invite members and communities, I think, would be something worth considering.
So how about we do this? There, there seems to be some open questions, and we're really low on time. How about we bring this back at the next meeting with just kind of, we've reached out to these organizations that can do the childcare, food, and check the boxes, hey, we're going to have, you know, translation- we're going to have, you know, translation services here and then just to make sure there's no outstanding questions or if there is a concern, we can get it addressed and finalized because if we don't give the community enough time to plan, they're not going to be able to attend. And, uh, I can start working with Ann on a draft that share with the full board on kind of the, the, the welcome letter or invitation letter and let everybody look and see if there's comments or suggestions around it as well. Is that, is that good for everybody?
Fair enough.
All right, thank you so much. All right. So next we have, uh, an agenda item that we, we put back on, um, the agenda, which is to give the board a chance to talk about redistricting. Last time, Mr. Abili had provided a lot of great information and gave us a quick update, but one of our commitments has been as a, a board to talk about redistricting at least once a month. And so this is the opportunity for, uh, any board members to ask clarity questions or comments and, um, uh, open it up to, to board for any questions or comments. Yeah, that's not the topic.
Sorry, Will, can you, can you repeat the question?
So this is, um, the, uh, the redistricting plus, uh, the other item on there is, uh, land banking. But we're, we were starting with the redistricting part to see, as we're doing this, I know a lot of, a lot of us have questions about just timing, next steps, what to expect. There was a lot of information provided at the last, uh, redistricting discussion. So this is just the opportunity first to allow any board member to, to ask any specific questions. Bonnie?
I, I'm just trying to understand how they got combined because I thought redistricting was kind of an urgent need to get our, especially our elementary schools balanced in the next 15 or 16 months as opposed to land banking, which is a long-term plan for new schools to get land for new schools.
So I think we got here because two meetings ago, this was on the agenda and it was bumped for the same reason we're at now, where we're at the end of the meeting and out of time for operational items. So when it came back up, we were also asked to provide an update on redistricting. There's, the two items are related because when you talk about future growth and future school sites being in inventory or not in inventory, that makes a difference on the reassignment scenarios and the reassignment planning. So you have that information. The additional information is OREAD as part of their technical assistance and work is providing the board information, which includes a land use study, the same information that was provided previously that would end to the reassignment planning process. They're providing that as well. They will look at land banking. Obviously, we don't have any in inventory, but whether we have inventory or not, there's still an assessment that needs to happen about the community, including the land and including growth and development, including businesses that may be expanding or relocating to the area, including interstates and, and inner, um, inner frameworks that will impact community growth and development because that's part of the assessment, the analysis. So we were asked to provide you an update on what we're working on and where we are. So land banking or not land banking is a question because there's still opportunities for us, which the board has not authorized. And the point on the slide, which I'll highlight is we have no land banked at this point in time as a district. We have no future land bank. There's no authorization been given, um, for staff to, uh, land bank. We are looking at that and trying to make, um, a determination that would come back to the board for that. But in general, um, we do not have any land currently banked for future growth and development. As you're going to see in the capital plans, if we get to those tonight, that there is money that's been sitting out there for 10 years on elementary school number eight.
Yeah.
Well, we can't build elementary school number eight on land that we don't have yet. So again, thinking about reassignment, redistricting, where we need to go, there are some basic elements of discussion. So the update tonight was in reference to land banking and the technical assistance that OREAD is going to provide on this. That's the only information we have. In addition, let me go to the last slide. So there's three things, um, that'll be next steps. One is the OREAD study. We anticipate having that back in July, uh, hopefully maybe August, September timeframe. Community input, you talked about your input sessions and understandably, you're not going to talk about reassignment, well, someone has to. And so the staff will be left to do that and we will go out into the community to get feedback and bring that back. Certainly you might hear from staff or from community members at your Listen and Learns. And so understanding that your sessions are Listen and Learns because we originally thought we were pairing together on this so that we had the same voice from staff and from the board members in the community. But I understand, so we're planning on, we'll do one session virtually and we'll do one session in person. We'll try to do those in April because what I have found from experience, when you start bringing up topics that can cause folks to get a little angst and upset, doing those in May and doing those at the end of the school year, right before students take EOGs and EOCs is not good timing for parents. And so we'll, we'll do those meetings in April and then we'll kind of not put any information out, again, letting folks get through the school year, breathe, um, finish up the year and then we will be back with the reassignment plan. And then again, that reassignment plan with the goal, we would have those scenarios, we would have it out for the community, provide feedback, any boundary changes, um, any proposals back in the fall so that you all would have that plan approved with the goal by December of 2023 for it to go into effect in August of 2024. That's the update tonight.
Bonnie?
When, when you do the community impact, right, from, from communities perspective, where they, there's no information. So when you go out to the community to get input and feedback, what, what do you want them to tell you?
There's two things. So your initial meetings is about the priorities and about why we're redistricting, understanding the capacity concerns, the growth and development concerns, the balancing of schools, the opportunities for students. We look at the structures that guide us by policy. We look at the information conveyed as far as neighborhoods, impacts of neighborhoods. But yes, we won't have a plan to share. We can share, um, information that the board already has, that we've already shared previously, but it's about initially helping folks understand the processes and what they can expect back, when they can expect it back and how we'll help communicate with them. They'll also provide feedback on their communication cycles, you know, how do we need to do that? From what I heard from the board, um, on the previous reassignment plan that was not approved was there wasn't community input. The community needed to be involved and so here we are trying to involve the community before we ever write the scenarios and we ever bring back the plan.
Sarah?
I think one potential additional thing you could get some input on at this point is around what families would want in order to have a successful transition for their children if they end up, if their kids end up reassigned, right? So like what would a really great transition to a new school need to look like for you before the point where people are feeling really heated about particular lines and whether that applies to them or not? Just getting some input about how to make that successful.
Yeah, and there's, there's, you're right because there's different methods to do that. I've seen school districts across the states when a certain percentage of students new come into the school, they might just have a new logo, they might have a new mascot, they might start something new, you know, keep the school name. But when there's such a large student change, um, to students attending the school, et cetera, you know, I've seen them where they've, where they've done things like that to help everybody kind of start new. So, you know, there's, there's different methods, but yeah, communicating, understanding the transitions. And we normally talk about transitions between tiers or grade levels and it's much similar to that process of orientation and inviting folks out and giving them an opportunity to be in the new environment.
So I think one of the other points around the, the land banking was just, discussion was to, to hear from Neil on any of the legal aspects of the land, land banking.
Not much to report on that, other than that you, you can do it. As I think I mentioned at an earlier meeting, there are some special rules that apply to land banking for economic development, which would not apply to you. That's, um, counties and municipalities can acquire land for private development purposes under certain restrictions, but what you're talking about here would be acquiring land to use for public school purposes. So that is pretty fairly common and it can be done, um, you know, consistent with the general statutes. So as long, you, you can't, you can't rent out your, the land for private gain, you can't try to make a profit off of it by, you know, using it for commercial purposes, but you can hold on to it for, for, uh, for future use.
And I think one other item around that was trying to give staff some direction around this in the sense of where would we, the board feel like the most likely areas to consider, not right this moment because we don't have the space. But I know that that was one of the, the feedback was we need to give some thoughts around it. For example, lots of growth in Meben, would that be an area that we would like staff to consider as we look across land banking, uh, long-term?
I, I just feel like staff are most informed, you know, you, you all are the ones that are in touch with the county the most and the, all, you know, all that. So I would be interested to know how you would weigh the recommendation about different locations, but, you know, I wouldn't want to weigh in on that.
Ann?
Do we still own land on Orange High School Road that was once bought for project houses?
There is.
Does the school system own it?
Yes, there is, or they, we did the last time I checked, um, in 2016. So there was a, it's right off of, uh, I think it's over towards Miller Road, actually, is where it's located.
It was originally bought for project houses. I didn't know how much there was, if that figures into any of, of this. I didn't know, just throwing that out.
No.
Okay.
Bonnie?
Is there, you know, um, if you look at growth, right, development, you know, the two places are Hillsborough and Meben and I, we've never had a conversation and I don't know if it's the elected officials to meet with the Meben folks to talk about as they're approving development, it is common to ask the developers to put, to, to offer space for, space for schools. Because right now what Meben is doing is they're developing it all without providing for, and, you know, so it's a conversation, it's a conversation, I think, that we, you know, a couple of us might want to unless we want to do it at a board-to-board, but have a, and I believe that the school board did at one time meet with the town of Meben. Am I correct?
We did.
And so to actually meet with them and talk about planning for growth and getting a school site.
I think, again, this is, this is where we need the board to provide input because there've been two major developments, um, over years, um, one Collington Farms, um, the second was the Meadows Project. The third now going in is Tupelo Junction, which is a very large development up near Mill Creek. The, the land has already been designated. There is no opportunity to build a school, but yes, those would have been prime opportunities had Meben, had we been involved in the process and Meben requested or we required, um, some land space for schools. There are many districts, that is how, one of the ways they get land to build future schools is through these large developments. And so that has not happened, um, with Meben. We do have, um, monthly TRC meetings with them, uh, so we are in communication about the current developments as far as school buses, sidewalks, pickup points, et cetera. But I'm not seeing anything that has allowed so far any input, but I do think that would be a great direction of the board to give.
So would the board like myself to engage at the elected to elected to start the conversation? So it's top of mind? I could go with.
I would like to be involved with that. I would like, I would like to participate in that conversation.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is. Or is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll, we'll start some discussions with them. Definitely we'll need some guidance on land size, et cetera, to help us with those discussions.
Yeah, we can, we can provide site profiles of what we would need based on the, um, grade configurations for future use.
Do you have any sense about, um, areas where future, Meben's going to be developing next? I'm thinking about, um, south of the interstate around Hebron, is it Hebron Church Road?
Yeah, you can follow the infrastructure plan that they've had that goes out like 25 years, um, and they're fulfilling that plan.
Yeah, so maybe you could share that with us before we.
All right. Any other questions? All right, board, we are getting close to time. I would like to request that we cover the other two items. One should be really quick. The other, um, may have some discussion. Would we like to have a motion to extend to cover those two?
I move to extend if we can, if we think we can do both, maybe by 10:15, I will.
So extend 15 minutes?
Yep, I move that we extend 15 minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A, a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So next item is the capital investment, uh, for, uh, 2024 and the unfunded projects for 2025 to 2033.
Yep, and the reason we preference those, um, as unfunded is each year we submit the CIP, the county has always required a 10-year plan, although statutory requirements is five years and we do submit, um, every fifth year to the Department of Public Instruction by legislative requirement, a building needs assessment, um, for the school district. The last one was completed in 2020, the next cycle will be coming at 2025. And with this 10-year plan, the county only funds one year at a time. And so we can project and we can cost out and we can break projects down over those 10 years, but it's one year at a time that you're funding, um, that they're funding for us. And so when you look at, I know we gave you quite a few sheets and information, when you look at the 2024 through 2033 capital investment plan, you'll see a column that's in yellow all the way down that says year one. That is the plan that we would be asking them to fund for the upcoming year. The rest of it, again, is information that's requested and required to our best estimates to the projects to be completed utilizing the old facility assessment, which is here. There's a few things about this assessment that I will say are guarantees. One is in 2013, when this assessment was done, we had old schools and facilities that were noted needed lots of work. 2023, we have older schools now that still need lots of work and they're even older. The second thing is all the projects that haven't been completed that were identified will cost us a whole lot more today than they did when the costs were put down in 2013. So, um, when we look at the funding plan, we're looking at future projects, projects that are identified to be completed. And it notes there, the assessments that we use, this being one of those, um, for the, the assessments. And the county has authorized the facility study to be, um, redone. They're in contract negotiations now with the, um, selected vendor and so hopefully that work will start very soon and we should have that report by the fall. So when we go through this report, um, or process next year, we would have some current updated data. So I wanted to give you, this is, I know it's a little small on the screen here, but there are actually seven pots of capital funding and we have spreadsheets for every one of those. And so part of the issue with tracking capital projects in the district is there are seven funding sources. funding sources. Some of those funding sources go back 10 years or more with the CIP, the 999s. And so when we think about our capital investment plan, there is a fund balance. We've had bonds, we've had deferred maintenance, supplemental deferred maintenance, um, and then our regular CIPs and additional CIPs, which is, um, what you're, that yellow line that you're seeing tonight of the approximately $3 million annually and projects that we bring forward. You can see at the beginning of the year, there was, um, not a county kept saying 44 million. Uh, check, Rhonda and I went back through the spreadsheets and documents. We're showing on the books 46,887,000, uh, 887,721.51. One thing that we want you to understand is there's not $46 million sitting in our banks here in the district. The county works off a reimbursement model that's debt financed, they draw down, we spend money, we submit for reimbursement, they put money back. And so all of that money came over a series of years. It wasn't just all here at one time. Some of it, it took years to get the money in order to complete the projects. For the 12 million supplemental deferred maintenance, there was absolutely a goal of not spending that money because very early on, the district was seeing that the 40-some million dollars on the bond, which is, was down to 15 million at the beginning of this school year, was exceeding, especially with the mechanical projects, the bids coming in. So we were using the 12 million to help make sure those projects get completed and we still are. So when you look at those projects, we've spent this year over $4 million. We have encumbered, which means POs are written, contracts are written, work is scheduled to be completed for another 4.2 million dollars. And so that brings our balance down to 37 million. And then we're showing projects we're working on that are in the queue or in the process, they're planned at some point, they're just not shown up in the accounting books because until we get through the process, until the contracts are signed and the POs are written, it's not going to show in the accounting. So that totals 15.476 million dollars of projects that we're working on this year. You just in consent agenda tonight approved almost $9 million that we will be sending to the county of projects being completed. So the notion that we're sitting on money, not knowing anything, we are moving, um, as quick as we can to get projects caught up and the projects completed. And the, and certainly the pandemic set things back tremendously. But I wanted you to see of the, of the 37 million dollars, um, in the balance, 15.476 will be written and under contract, uh, moving forward. So the next items were the unfunded needs and going back to, I looked back at the list from 2019, we were at $83 million in unfunded needs. We've given you spreadsheets for each school. We break down the major capital needs at, at each school by safety, new construction and buildings, major systems such as life safety systems, mechanical systems, roof systems, windows, et cetera, envelope systems. And then any other major building improvements could be anything from classroom renovations, food services, lighting projects, et cetera. So we look at each school, those major projects to be completed. We, we look at what's unfunded, so we subtract out some of the bond projects. And, uh, the transportation facility was in the bond. Chapel Hill pulled out, um, of that project, um, to utilize their funds for their, uh, single project in their district. And then we utilized our funds to supplement the impact fees that were lost, um, in the district when the legislative change occurred, knowing that we didn't have enough money to complete the transportation facility. That project was going to run about $8 million. I've estimated that at this point in time, we're probably looking at 15 million. Cause remember, it's not just the fleet that we have here in the county, but we also manage the fleet in Chapel Hill. There's one LEA recognized for school fleet transportation. All of the buses, the, even their buses, the 70-some they have there flow through, the yellow buses flow through the Orange County schools. Our mechanics go there every day, work in that single garage that half the bus sticks out the back end to work on. And we know the issues with our facility here with the age, um, and the, in the issues there. So we still believe that, that project needs to be funded at some point in time. The maintenance facility is currently a 1940 building. Um, it is not adequate and at some point in time, that facility is going to have to expand or be renovated. New elementary school number eight, um, we were looking at an estimate of around $40 million. I, I really think $60 million is the best estimate right now, um, for an elementary school. And again, that depends on, uh, et cetera. And then I did put in 3.5 million for swing space or future, um, space, just looking at market value. If we were to move some capital money around it, again, that's to your discussion earlier about budget committee, these are the types of items we would be discussing in committee as to, yes, we need to do that. Where do we move money within these seven pots to, in order to, to move that project forward? So that gives us, it will be submitting to the county, um, to date, 198 million dollars in unfunded projects. And again, we expect that number to change, um, and tremendously, especially when the facility assessment's done. I want to mention two schools here. Hillsboro Elementary School, the reason it's showing 38 million is, um, there was a complete, uh, tear down and rebuild of the 100 building. I also believe we've got some, um, work in the 300 building that's, that's going to probably end up putting that, um, wing of this, or that building at the school in the same capacity. So those two projects are renovation and rebuilds, um, they're not expansion. Orange High School still has a tremendous amount of work to go, um, as well as Central. And River Park Elementary School, there was an original plan, um, previously to take the, um, lower hallway wing. There was a four classroom addition that was added, um, many years ago to renovate that and expand and add, um, more classroom space there. And so, um, those were the projects that we're still showing here. Now, any other schools, certainly, um, our older schools could be argued, add more money and build or renovate. And that's part of the facility assessment because what we want to not do is just spend six, eight, 10, 12 billion dollars in a school that, that is not cost effective to keep doing that, especially with life cycles. And so that brings us to what are some challenges and barriers? I won't read all of this to you, but I do want to point out, uh, the districts has had, district has had four interims, uh, or designated COOs, um, in four years. So at least four different people responsible, um, for the capital, um, our facility make, uh, maintenance work orders. So I'm tracking right now on the capital sheets, um, over 100 capital projects. Hear me say that again, over 100 capital projects for that $46 million. And Chapel Hill, their capital plan was one project at $78 million, Chapel Hill High School. And so think about the staffing and what it takes to, to manage projects. I know Hank is with us tonight, our Assistant Director of Maintenance, and he probably has at least 50 projects on his list, just of maintenance projects that aren't even on the, the capital list. But think about the processes that we have to use in order to take these projects forward. We have to meet local, state and federal laws, hiring of architects and engineers, we have to post the bids, um, all of these wound up in, most of these wound up in the formal range, over 500,000, they're complex contracts. They require bid bonds and performance and payment bonds. And in fact, if the bid bonds aren't there, if I get three bids, even under the formal bids, by law, I'm prohibited from opening those. Cannot open them if the bid bonds aren't there. Um, and so insurance requirements, DPI requires us to submit the projects, to review and certify the projects, including the local zoning review and approve the projects. And then we have to go through the construction and the phasing, um, and everything that goes with that. And then just so you know, um, as far as, um, our own labor forces, we are statutory prohibited, um, with thresholds within the law as far as how much a project, you know, we can't do projects over 125,000 dollars, um, in-house. We can't do, um, any projects of that, um, under 125. If our labor cost, um, within those is over $50,000 and if it's over $30,000, we're supposed to have a, um, general contractor or we have to sign and, and do an affidavit saying that we're acting as our own general contractor. So it gets complex. This is not sitting down and deciding with the committee today, a book order we want to do and tomorrow place in the order for the books. It doesn't work that way. It takes us months and time to go from the development, the architectural engineering, to the bidding processes, to bringing that back, writing contracts and getting work done. So that brings us to our, my next point I want to make is the county, when we go forward with the 3.1 million dollars with the projects in that yellow column for you this evening to approve, when we take that to the county, they will approve it and fund us for the year starting July 1. There is absolutely no way to receive money on July 1 and go through everything I just said and have that work done before students arrive back for traditional schools the end of August. And so having seed money and having some money in the rears will allow us, because we're taking that money and we're moving the projects forward and planning out projects a year or two ahead, but it's not an immediate turnaround. And so we will start this year with $3 million that we've requested, but it will take us some time to get those projects moving along. That's just the reality of how the funding works. And so the other thing I think it's critically important for the board to understand, we have put a conscious effort instead of trying to do 100 individual projects and going into a classroom this year and doing windows, and a couple of years later doing the mechanical system and then coming back and doing lights and ceiling tiles. And then later on down the road, maybe eight or nine years later, we might get back to doing the tile and the painting of the walls. Let's use the concept of scoping this and maximizing our time and resources and it will cost us less money if we just close down the wing, relocate the kids and go in when we're doing the mechanical systems, cause that's the most disruptive and destructive work we can do in a classroom. And while we're in there and we tearing everything up, let's go ahead and replace the lights, the ceiling tiles, paint the room, do the floor tiles, et cetera, while we're in there. And that takes coordination to make that happen, but it also helps us get the projects moving along at a better pace and we're not disrupting the school environment multiple times over multiple years. And so River Park is a great example of what we did over a couple summers. Uh, there was almost $6 million worth of work that was completed there. We're about to do the same thing at Fland and at Central. Yes, there were some work scheduled at Orange High that didn't get done. We're going back and, and working on the restrooms and the other project work. But that's what we're trying to do to maximize the effort and the time. And so that's where swing space becomes very important. Mobile units become very important because we have to have a place to put people because it's going to take longer than six weeks or eight weeks and we're going to have to rotate around. And it's painful and I've been a principal on the campus that had it happen. Can it be done? Absolutely, but you have to do it safely. We can't, we cannot do these projects and have unsafe environments for people on the campus. So that's how we're working to better resolve some of the issues. But here's the other point I want to leave you with. When we go into Fland, when we go into Central, when we go into River Park and we do all those nice things, we upgrade the mechanical systems, we do the lights, we do the floor, we do the paint, do the whole bit, everyone's happy and nice. The square footage of the classroom didn't change. How it was designed in 1952 or 1958 for the square footage is the same square footage you end up with when we do all those nice things. And so part of the conversation has to be these older schools. It's not just about upgrading systems and maintaining them in their current state. It has to be about the standard that we're expecting. Now, yes, there has been a push at the state to reduce K3 class sizes, which is great. But ask anyone, ask our teachers, go around to any school district and classrooms that were designed for 22 students in fourth and fifth grade have 28, 29 and 30 students in them. We have a problem because the state has pushed that with the allocations to the upper grades because we have no choice, um, when the allocations have to be restricted in the lower grades. So with that, I will, um, ask for any questions or comments about all the documents that I shared with you.
Board, could we get a friendly extension?
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion for 10 and a second for 10.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Questions?
So first of all, Patrick, I just want to thank you because after, you're the fourth in the line of COOs and you got $15 million of projects out the door. So thank you for that. That's pretty remarkable.
Yeah, I thank the team as well because everybody has worked extremely hard down the line.
Absolutely. If, um, so thank you for that. And I think this will help to reconcile the county's perception about the data, which they, their books say one thing and they want to, as I understand it, they want to give us more money, so they just want to know that we're using it. Um, I, the, and, and it was kind of interesting when, and actually on, on your list of projects that you've put forward, a bunch of those weren't on the CIP, right? These are things that are happening because our old schools are getting older.
Yep.
You know, and there's other projects, if I understand correctly, sewer infrastructure and a couple of schools and some other things that really need attention. So, and if, finally, I think the county wants to give us more money to, um, the words I've heard was Band-Aid, to keep these schools running, but, you know, before we get this full facilities plan where they're going to decide what schools, what the long-term plans will be for the building. So the question on the table, and oh, one other thing, your guys are working, your guys and women are working around the clock to, more than around the clock and what must feel like a thankless job because they're just producing work orders and however, if they do 20 things, 30 pop up. So there's a question about can we take some of this maintenance and move it to capital and see if, and if the money is there, is there a way we could spend it faster and take some of the things that we call maintenance and make it capital and get some, get some help to get some of this stuff done?
We are, I meet, um, we try every week, um, for an extended period of time with the maintenance staff and Patrick, um, with the construction projects and that's what we do. We, we talk about the money, projects that they need to move forward, how we can utilize the capital funds in order to make sure the projects that they're identifying are getting completed. Because we have some projects that were already funded, um, and there are a few pots that we've been able to pull money from, exactly what you're saying. But we, we try to do that, um, on a regular basis. But certainly it, we can outsource. I mean, that's, yeah, I've heard me say that more than one time, like this doesn't mean we have to do this in-house.
Yes.
And so, you know, make, and that's also why we limit the number of summer programs to what buildings they're operating in so that we can free up campuses to get work completed. So I think we're, we're in alignment with that and agree that there's multiple ways we can continue to get projects accomplished. I think we're doing a remarkable job.
Carrie?
I'm, I'm ready to make a, a motion if other people don't want to.
I, I do have just a couple of questions. Um, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just have, do you need us on Thursday to have a conversation with the county about releasing the money? Cause you, one of the things you're saying is we don't get it July 1st, you can't plan for it, but what assumption should we make for planning and is that $22 million hours? Can we get it?
I can provide you additional, I don't want to take all your time.
Okay.
I can provide you additional bullet points of comments I've made tonight that I would ask you to move forward.
Great, great.
All right. I, I just have a, a quick few questions. So the first one really is something that can be given back to me and I'm sure the rest of the board is, now that we have the geothermal installed, can we get what the savings we're seeing is with that compared to the prior years? Is that possible? I mean, I'm not asking for it now, just if we could.
Yes.
Start seeing that. I've been asked about that a couple of times at this point. So no rush on that, just whenever we can. Um, the, the next one I had was, um, before COVID, um, there was a project that was for resurfacing the tennis courts and the track at Orange High. And I know it was like 150K and I know it probably came in at 10 times that. Do we know? Do we know when that might occur? Because I know I've looked at it.
Soon. So that's one of the projects that I asked Patrick to research, pull me the contracts to what was contractually obligated with mostly your funding reserves as part of that project for A and E Designs. My understanding, talking with staff, is it was about a million dollars, and they said, whoa, we don't have the money for that. I'm like, well, we have millions of dollars to repair things. Let's get things completed because it's a safety issue. So we've done temporary repairs at this point in time. But yes, so we just have to look back at the bids, any rebidding that needs to take place. The package should be completed, ready to go, but those projects are on our list to be completed.
Okay. And the last question I had was, Eflin Sewer, is that part of the overall larger project? I know that that's been kind of a pain point to date. Is that part of the larger Eflin projects with the trailers and?
So phase two, when we, we will have to shut down and, and go under, expand. There's, there's many issues, yes, with those lines out there. I don't know the extent of that project yet, but it, it would be scheduled in phase two.
Okay. And the last one is just a comment, is that one of the things the county was looking for during the acceleration is what could they do to help us? And, you know, as part of that was, hey, if we needed, I'm making this up, four extra trailers, but they, it didn't allow that, right? They would be willing to consider to allow us some temporary allowance to do our construction and then remove it. So I guess the point I'm making is, if there are things like that, because we don't have swing space, do a whole wing or that, they want us to bring that to them and, and request it, especially if there's some zoning that won't allow it for us to do it temporarily. So I just wanted to put some text around the, the acceleration part that the county is willing to have a conversation with us on what, what are we looking for? And then, you know, duration and time to allow us to accelerate some of these build-outs, given the small amount of time we have.
I think that's appropriate, and I would also include Clear the Runway. Because all of these projects tonight, you know, some of those will involve moving money, rebalancing. We've sent a request over, and so, you know, making sure we find a spot on the agenda, their agenda, and then some items may need to go to the LGC as well. And so I think helping us with making sure, and they are helping us with quarterly CIP meetings, so we are meeting with them to balance the books and go through the projects. But I do think helping us, once we identify budget transfers or additional approval at their level or LGC, then helping us expedite those.
So that would be, Dr. Felder, an excellent topic for us during the next joint chairs meeting to really dig a little deeper in that, because I, I think we can make traction on that. All right.
Can I just add a quick comment, which is, Patrick, thank you so much for all of this huge amount of work as, as you were answering questions about very specific projects, and you were talking about the hundred. Like, I have no idea how you keep track of that and everything else that you keep track of. But I know that this is a huge effort, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second?
A motion to second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the updated calendar.
We added March fifth, well, the board approved March fifth, two thousand twenty-four as a non-student day. It will be an optional teacher workday. On optional teacher workdays, teachers do have the option or staff to work from home. And so our task was, with the calendar committee, was to find where the six hours of instruction that we're losing on that day comes from in order to make sure we meet the statutory requirements. What we proposed is, we had two days banked for students for inclement weather, and we've removed one of those days. So we're reducing our number of school days for the calendar to a hundred and seventy-three days. And our inclement weather plan was impacted, no other days. There was one other day changed. We did get some feedback while we were meeting that week on President's Day with a lot of questions about why schools were not closed. And so there was a work day that Friday for traditional schools, and we've backed it up to Monday to coincide with President's Day. So we did make that minor change.
And I see we're able to keep the early release on the last day.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Got to have that.
All right. Can we get a motion?
I move that we approve revised twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five student ten-month staff calendars as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Patrick, and thank you to the full committee for such diligent work on this and being able to be accommodating for all these. Thank you. All right. With all business completed, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.